As required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing delivery, and filing of this notice on July 2nd, 2020. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Korean news, the ACO Sentinel, and tapped into Warren, and filed with the township clerk of the township of Warren. All in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please all rise and join me in the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for the free and pure.
Mr. Bellish.
Here.
Mr. Bishi.
Here.
Mr. Brazee.
Here.
Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Here, hello.
Mr. Franco.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Zahn.
Here.
And Mr. Bellman.
Here.
We have a quorum and may proceed.
Thank you. Resolved that the Board of Education approves the public and private session minutes of the July 20th, 2020 Board Meeting.
DiMaggio seconds.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Bellish.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Brazee.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Correspondence and information, Dr. Mingle.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bellman. Since the last board meeting, the board has been emailed or copied on nine letters from parents with questions or suggestions related to the reopening planning. Five of those were requests for full return to school. Two were family-specific questions. One was a suggestion regarding staffing and one was support for the existing plan. In addition, the board president was emailed or copied on four other letters, one from a student and three from parents. Three of those letters were support for the existing plan and one was a vendor solicitation. And I also reported to the board sixty-five other emails that I received, forty-seven from parents, broken down as this. Eighteen were questions about the information sessions tomorrow. Twelve were support for the existing plan. Five were vendor solicitations from community members. Four were suggestions for future decision-making. Two were dissatisfactions with superintendent communication. Two were requests for the full return of all students. Two were family-specific questions. One was a letter of appreciation for summer fun and one was a letter of appreciation for spring distance learning. And fourteen emails from staff members. Six were support for the existing plan and process. Four were suggestions for future decision-making. Four were questions about tomorrow's employee information session. And four additional emails from students, which were all support for the existing plan and process. That's all in correspondence.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mingle. President's remarks. Good evening and welcome to our virtual meeting of the Warren School Board. My name is Chris Bellman and I'm your host for this evening. We have a full program this evening, so permit me to give a quick overview of those items. There will be a presentation by Dr. Mingle of the Warren reopening options with an overview of the plan of how we might move in between the different options we have. That will be followed by discussion by the board with an opportunity of public commentary. We have a number of necessary business items to be addressed. Would also like to promote a discussion by the board on how to improve public engagement. Once again, it was an opportunity for more feedback from the public. As we begin, let me note that we're happy to see along with parents a number of our teachers, staff, as well as administrators. Over the past few months and weeks, this board and our superintendent have been listening. We continue to listen to representatives from local and state government, health officials, educational professionals, parents, and interested citizens. We also hope to have heard the children through their parents and teachers. We are trying to be flexible and find our Warren solution. There is no perfect plan for everyone. And whatever plans we put into place will likely be impacted by changing conditions and circumstances. As we have seen today where Governor Murphy announced new rules for students attending school in person this fall, which Dr. Mingle will mention in his presentation. And with that, I will hand over to Dr. Mingle for the superintendent's remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman. Just a few things before we go into the formal presentation. First of all, outside of return to school, we are preparing for tropical storm preparedness and I thought it is important. Typically, this is the kind of update that we have in our superintendent's updates. Our buildings and grounds and maintenance staff have done a perimeter check of all of our buildings to ensure there are no loose objects and everything is secured and brought into the buildings, cleared all of our roof drains and gutters. In terms of future board meetings and communications, the board has added two special meetings, including this one, in the month of August, for a total of three meetings this month. Today's meeting focuses on the scheduling model for how we will return to school. The August 17th meeting will be a deep dive into the at-home learning experience or distance learning. And the August 31st meeting will be a deep dive into health and safety protocols one week before students return. Also, before we go into the actual presentation, I want to take a minute to thank the team of people who have worked around the clock for the last not only two weeks, but several months, as Mr. Bellman said. We have the subcommittee chairs, many of them are on the call tonight. Lance Regal, our IT director, is the subcommittee chair for technology. Michael Pate, our facilities subcommittee chair. Derek Ressa, our wellness subcommittee chair. Pat Lenhart, our operations subcommittee chair. And Bill Kimmick, our instruction subcommittee chair. We also have ad hoc board, district, and school committees throughout the district that have been working very hard in their preparations. And of course, our entire leadership team has come together to work on various aspects of implementation as well. For the members of the public that are here tonight, if you're planning on participating in public commentary at some point, I would ask that you please right-click your name and rename it to your legal name for the purposes of our keeping minutes. And if you choose to participate, we ask that you turn your camera on at the time you're asking your question as well. And that's all for superintendent remarks, Mr. Bellman.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mingle. Moving on to the presentation, Dr. Mingle, please.
Thank you, just give me one second. Okay, Mr. Bellman, can you just confirm that you can see the return to school plan on the screen right now?
I can see the return to school plan.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to share the plans for how we will reopen school facilities on September 8th, 2020 to our students and on September 1st, 2020 to our staff members. I will present the overview, the opening, and then turn it over to Mr. Kimmick and then Mr. Ressa, our curriculum director and director of special services, to go into a little bit more detail on those areas. As a reminder, we've been working all along back since, basically since we went out on safely returning all students and staff members to the Warren Township schools as our primary concern. And we established guiding principles several months ago that prioritize the health and safety of our students and our staff members. In accordance with guidance from the New Jersey Department of Education, our return to school plan encourages physical distancing, discourages student cohort mixing like what occurs in lunch periods, recess, and assemblies, encourages and improves hygiene practices, and takes into consideration the impact on the mental health and wellness of our students, our staff, and the wider community. Our return to school plan will continue to rely on the most up-to-date scientific data and professional recommendations available while working hard to provide both flexibility and predictability to our families and staff members as much as we can. It's important to note that our plans require that we respond to updated guidance from various entities and will be adjusted to follow the directives of local and state health officials and the New Jersey Department of Education. The New Jersey Department of Education guidelines also say that we must follow CDC guidelines. This note became even more important today than it might have been twenty-four hours ago as Governor Murphy announced a new expectation that all students will wear face coverings when in school facilities at all times. So that will be communicated further as we go into our presentation, but that's an example of something that changed today. In addition, we have weekly meetings with our local health officials and the guidance that our health officials are giving us has started to change as well. If you're watching the governor's press conferences, you can see and hear the data that is shifting in the state. For example, the change down to a maximum of twenty-five people in a facility outside of school. So we constantly will be responding to those changing principles as they come forward. In the presentation that we go through tonight, we'll use a couple of terms I thought would be helpful to define them upfront. We talk about a hybrid schedule model. We're talking about the calendar, the schedule, in which students learn through blended learning, which means some of their time is in a school facility and some of their time is technology-based through distance education. The term blended learning itself is just talking about that combination of in-person and technology-based teaching methods. And when we talk about the term distance learning from a scheduling model perspective, we mean students who are learning 100% in a technology-based distance learning model. Those are students who do not attend school facilities for any programming. I know that this graphic is very small in a Zoom, but a live, hyperlinked version will go onto the district website early tomorrow morning, which we hope will provide a really good and easy-to-see and read overview of our plans. It links to the larger plan and I give credit to the Chester School District who shared this template with me. Briefly, I'm going to walk through all twenty of these facts because it covers pretty much the entire plan and then we'll get into more detail about the scheduling models and the decisions parents have to make in the next several days. First, the students will attend school through a hybrid schedule that meets the board's directive for at least fifty percent of the school days being in person. Students will attend school for single-session days on either Monday and Tuesday or Thursday and Friday with alternating Wednesdays. Students who are not in school facilities will engage in distance learning. We'll go into much more detail about the hybrid schedule in a few minutes. Parents can select to enroll their children in full-time distance learning. Classes will be taught by certified Warren Township teachers and follow a daily schedule that aligns with the in-facility education. We will also go into more detail about that in tonight's presentation. We will continue to make physical distancing a highest priority in our planning by adhering to the CDC guideline for six feet physical distancing. It was reiterated to us by our health officials today that students wearing face coverings does not eliminate the requirement that they maintain physical distancing of six feet or more. New Jersey DWE guidelines require adults and, as of today, students to wear face coverings at all times when in school facilities. We will be asking parents and our staff members to help us by attesting that they are symptom-free on a daily basis, that students are symptom-free and staff members before getting on a school district bus or entering a school district facility. And we will conduct additional screenings by district staff as well. Students in our ABA Autism Program and our LLD Language Learning Disabilities Program will attend school daily as a cohort C, meaning they will attend school in person with both cohorts A and cohorts B. Other special education services will be addressed per a student's IEP, whether they are in a hybrid or the full distance learning. Mr. Ressa will talk more about that in a little bit. School facilities will essentially be closed to visitors. We will continue to adhere to directives issued by our local and state health officials. We are in constant contact with those individuals at this point. Students and staff members with underlying health conditions as defined by the CDC will be provided with reasonable accommodations as determined by their personal health professionals and reviewed by the school district physician. Students and staff will be provided hand-washing opportunities throughout the day with hand sanitizer available as a backup when hand washing is unavailable. Our students will be assigned to an A or a B day and to a specific homeroom class and will remain with those students while in school facilities to the greatest extent possible. We'll talk more about that as well. Our HVAC systems are being adjusted to increase the percentage of fresh air following recommendations from professional facility management organizations. Parents will have the opportunity to select whether or not they would like to waive school district transportation due to the logistics and routing around school district transportation. This is a commitment that parents are being asked to make for the school year. You cannot guarantee the availability of a seat on the bus if parents waive their right to school district transportation. So on that note, if a parent is not sure whether or not they need transportation, don't waive it. Take the seat and we'll adjust accordingly. Signage will be posted throughout school district facilities related to both physical distancing and hygiene practices. School districts by state executive order have a role to play in contact tracing. And as such, we are required to maintain close records of every student and staff contact that takes place from the time they get to a bus stop till the time they get back to their home. Close contacts are defined as within six feet for more than ten minutes at a time, whether or not students or staff are wearing face coverings. More information about that will be coming in our August 31st presentation. Our custodial staff will perform daily cleaning and sanitization following CDC guidelines and will address high-touch areas throughout the school day. In Hybrid 1.0, which is what we are going to open with in September, lunch and recess will not occur. This is a change from when we presented our initial draft two weeks ago. Lunch and recess will not occur in Hybrid 1.0. Snack and physical activity breaks will be provided. Mr. Kimmick will walk us through a model schedule in a bit. Fall sports will not occur at Warren Middle School. Opportunities for winter and spring sports are still under consideration and obviously that'll be dependent on changing conditions as time goes on. We will also be offering a menu of virtual after-school activities across the district like we did in the spring. Flexibility is really important. Just today, we had numerous changes that made us pivot even in the presentation after we did our final draft this morning. Procedures will be developed as well for parents to have flexibility as far as the model they choose for their child. We will be announcing procedures to change that instructional model from hybrid to distance or from distance to hybrid so long as you give us at least thirty days' notice and we can make it happen. And finally, communication. We will continue, once school facilities reopen, with our new weekly updates that we started back in the spring to make sure everybody's up to date on the ongoing changes to our conditions. So the headline is that for 2020, 2021, as you all know, we will be offering both options to parents. A hybrid option, which is an A/B cohort model, Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday with alternating Wednesdays, or a full-time distance learning model. I'd like to pick up from the last sentiment there. There's nobody on any planning committee on the Board of Education and the administration, certainly in our parents or our student community, that doesn't want us to be in a full traditional model. That is where we want to get to. And when the health conditions and our guidance from the state and the CDC and our local health officials allow us to, that's where we're going to go to. Two weeks ago, I talked about the development of a progression-based criteria of what it looks like to be across the continuum from where we are now, all the way to the left of the screen, which is full facility closure, 100% distance learning, moving all the way across the continuum to full traditional, where we were a year ago. Full school days, 100% building and classroom capacity. So this document, and I thank our partners in Greenbrook who started out the template for us, we will be opening in Hybrid what we're calling Hybrid 1.0, which starts with a single-session student day. The exact amount of time is dependent on the final Watchon Hills Regional High School schedule, which they're having their meeting tonight as well because our transportation tiers are tied to theirs. So it may not be exactly the same starting and ending times as we're used to, but we will be finalizing that for our next meeting. So we'll open with fifty percent building capacity in the A/B groups, as we've talked about, in a blended learning model. As you go across the continuum, we will immediately, as soon as we have the September model in place, be looking into what it will take for us to go to longer school days and then across the continuum to start transitioning back to more students. So as long as health conditions go in the right direction, as long as our public health officials tell us it's okay to move in that direction, as long as our students and staff are able to manage the health screening process and the behaviors of physical distancing and face coverings, our goal will be to move across the continuum towards full traditional learning. There's a couple of definitions down on the bottom of the screen. We've already talked about blended learning model. As I said, single-student session days, the exact time will be somewhere between four and a half and five hours. So we're saying four and a half hours of pure instructional time that does not include a lunch or recess, a time period with the specific school start and end times being determined at a future date. So why did we make this the final model? Several questions I think people will have that I'll run through quickly before we move on to the specifics of what it'll look like. So why not, why did we choose within the week instead of the week by week? Those of you who were in the meeting two weeks ago know that we were having some discussion about that. Ultimately, it came down to these criteria. The benefit of students having an in-person experience with their teachers every week, which helps us with the transmission of materials and not to mention the benefits socially and emotionally. This schedule matches the other Watchon Hills Regional High School sending districts with the exception that two of the other sending districts will be following our original model where Wednesdays are full distance learning. Greenbrook and Warren will be following this exact model as will Watchon Hills Regional High School. The fact that the schedule matches Watchon Hills is, while it's not important to everybody, it's very important to our families who have children in both the K8 and the 912 district. And we will be able to maintain our existing transportation contracts and services for those people who need them by aligning our schedules this way. Last time, we talked a lot about an AM/PM option. Why is that not possible? First of all, there's not enough time or resources for us to do the extensive cleaning required between cohorts if we were to do an AM and a PM cohort. The instructional day would be shortened to two and a half hours as it is in all of the other districts that are saying they're going to do an AM/PM cohort, which lessens our overall academic time. So our students, coming five out of every ten days, will have as much or more on-task instructional academic time as students in districts where they're going every day with two and a half hour days. If we went to an AM/PM schedule, we would have to rebid our entire transportation contract, which would include significant expense increases for new bus routes if we could even get them, even if most of our parents waived transportation because state law requires us to have it available. And the AM/PM schedule, as does our current schedule, creates challenges for childcare. One of the significant changes from last meeting is the movement to single-session days. When we were scheduling out the day and modeling it out with our building principles, we found that lunch and recess became a bigger and bigger challenge, especially as we see changing conditions from the governor's office and from the Department of Education and our health officials about what we can and cannot do in a cafeteria. The limiting lunch and recess for now under Hybrid 1.0 allows us to focus on the academic experience and maintaining health and safety guidelines before we bring that in. Under the model that we were looking at, we would have had to reduce the day to about five and a half hours anyway because of the time needed for all the different protocols and transportation. And an hour of that time was lunch and recess. So in the end, it's the same amount of instructional time as it would have been with the full day just without the lunch and recess. We will continue to talk about the possibility with our PTOs about a grab-and-go food days option at the end of the day so that we can maintain that program. Time is created within the single-session schedule so that our teachers have time in the contractual day to develop consistent instructional strategies and curriculum implementation, something we know is a high priority among our community, and connect with the students who are not in school facilities and engage in ongoing professional learning. And finally, why can't we just have all the kids go back full-time? It is not possible to adhere to the physical distancing requirements with all students present. Again, it was reiterated to us by our health officials at the local and county levels just this afternoon that maintaining six feet of physical distancing is absolutely essential to our reopening plan. Solutions that might allow us to gain more space, such as portables or renting out facilities, require a huge investment of capital, both human and financial, that we just don't have. We've done some of that initial exploration. I visited a site myself. We're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars just to get started. Even if we made that commitment tonight, we would not be ready to do that in September and we would need the Hybrid 1.0 model. The small number of districts across the state, less than five percent, who say that they're going to attempt a full return to school generally have equal or less instructional time planned, have pretty much put out clear caveats that they may not be able to implement their plan and have generally not communicated plans to address many of the other issues that I'm outlining here. And I have reviewed the plans and I've talked to many of the leaders of those districts and I'm confident that our recommendation is the one that is, it gives us the best chance at consistent academic instruction for our students in a healthy and safe manner. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kimmick to take us through Hybrid 1.0.
Hey, thank you, Dr. Mingle. Can you hear me okay? Just make sure.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bellman.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to just talk about our Hybrid 1.0 schedule and just some of the details surrounding that. So if you could advance the next slide, please, Dr. Mingle. You can see here is a slide that provides an outline of a sample K5 schedule. It's important to note within the schedule that we have not assigned what time of day these things will be taking place, that these subjects will be taking place. That is, as Dr. Mingle mentioned, really contingent on some transportation decisions that we have to make in our start and end times related to the high school. But you can get a sense here when you look at the Monday, Tuesday of the Hybrid A in-person and the Hybrid B students that will be distant or at home. And on each of these schedules, you can see that there is a pretty consistent academic program that we are looking to lay out for students that would take place on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Fridays. So the idea would be that on each one of those days, whether a student is in-person or working at home from a distance, that they would have daily support provided to them directly by teachers, that there would be a progression of academic content that would be consistent from Monday to Friday for both groups of students. And one of the things that we'll be looking to do within our schedule as well is to really create a sense of community through processes like morning meetings, shared meets, that really look at the idea of if we have a Hybrid A group and a Hybrid B group and there are pods of students that share a common homeroom that provide opportunities through a morning meeting for those pods to be able to talk to one another even if one is in distance and one is actually at school. So that's part of our vision in terms of the way that the program would work. You can also see that the sequence of the grade level blocks would need to vary based on when a theory called "what I need" would take place at each grade level. But the idea being that students would have an opportunity really for some individualized instruction that also takes into account that there may be some learning that we want to address in terms of either challenges that students are having or enrichment that students would need based on some of the assessment information that we would be gaining from students in the opening of the school year. The other aspect of the schedule that you'll notice is that there has to be time built in for aspects like arrival and dismissal and transitions and hand washing. All of those things will take more time in the in-person model than would typically be the case in a normal year. So we are anticipating that and it's time that we have to allocate within the schedule to make sure that students address that. And then you can also see that there's a play and a snack break built in for students as well. One other aspect of that is that specials in our model would likely take place at home after students travel to their home and have a lunch break. So students will log back in after they return home and have an opportunity to have a special session that would occur at that time as well. If you please advance the slide, Dr. Mingle. So the next slide really addresses our 6/8 schedule. You'll notice that is very similar to the K5 schedule. You'll see again the Hybrid A in-person, the Hybrid B is distance on Monday, Tuesday. On Thursday, Friday, Hybrid B is in-person and Hybrid A is distance. And then you'll note that on alternating Wednesdays, one of those groups would be remaining with us at school. It's really important to emphasize again, if this wasn't emphasized in the last slide, that students that are participating at home on Wednesdays would be expected to follow the same schedule as the students that are participating at school. So anybody that's in an at-home learning environment or a distance learning environment would have the same type of structures and the same type of schedule that are provided for students at school as well. You can see also within the middle school block that we are incorporating your wind period. We're also incorporating each of the core content areas. There is a time for movement and a break for students as well because that becomes important as well even at that level because school will look very different. There will be a number of social distancing requirements that really require middle school to look very different than it would in a typical year. You'll also note again that we have not assigned times to these schedules yet until we are able to verify just when our opening and closing exact times would be and then we can work from there. But you get a good sense of how the schedule would flow across Monday through Friday. And it's very important to understand that the same learning progression would be maintained for both groups, Monday through Friday. It wouldn't be altered. The expectations would be very similar for both sets of students. It wouldn't be altered. The expectations would be very similar for both sets of students. The major difference would be where they're doing their learning, whether it's at home or at school. Okay, Dr. Mingle, next slide, please. So when we look at the overall K student experience, we're emphasizing that students in both cohorts will be expected to follow the daily routine and the schedule. So that schedule that, that will be communicated to families and to students is something that will take place Monday through Friday, whether students are at home or whether students are in school. So the expectation is that students will be available, that they'll be logging into classes, that they'll be doing, for instance, their math work during their math period. And that would be consistent both at school and at home. Part of our approach on that is to maintain consistency, predictability and accountability for students. That's something again that we know that that predictable kind of scheduling is, is good for students. It's also very helpful for staff in terms of, of knowing what types of expectations we should have for students and for the submission and the type of work that students are doing. We do want to emphasize community building across the pods within, within the hybrid cohort. So when we, when we think about students in a, say, a fifth grade homeroom that are divided into two pods and one would be the in-person hybrid A and one might be hybrid B that's doing in-person on different days. We really want to support that idea of creating a sense of community across the two pods for that one homeroom. So one way of doing that, for example, is through class meetings that take place that includes both groups on a daily basis. And then other aspects of that would be instructional strategies that don't necessarily restrict a distance learning student from actually having interactions with an in-person student. If a teacher feels that that's the appropriate thing to do and needs to have a small group kind of period that takes place involving students from both groups. We do want to provide opportunities for daily synchronous and asynchronous supports to take place in both the in-person and the distance learning at home students. And part of that strategy is recording many of those things so that people can access them at a time. If for some reason synchronous learning is not possible, they can access that at a time where they're able to use it as a frame of reference moving forward. And, and the main goal in all of this is to provide increased fluidity of support for students. And so we really want students to have a very continuous learning experience that has a lot of common practices between in-person and distance. And, and that's something again that is, you know, emphasized in, in a lot of the areas that will be included within our plan. Okay, next slide, please. And the next aspect is really for students that are from families that elect to have full-time distance learning. So these are students that would not attend school physically at any point during the window that the parents have selected the full-time distance learning model to occur. So if we can go to the next slide, you'll see that we don't have a schedule that's posted for this because the schedule would, would pretty much follow the same type of schedule that was presented for the hybrid model. Students would have the same learning progression and schedule as those other students. Students would be provided, provided access to the same types of asynchronous and synchronous supports that are coordinated by a designated teacher. Again, students would be expected to submit all assignments in the same manner as peers participating in the hybrid option. And the one major difference would be text resources. Students that are coming to school within the hybrid model will have contact with the teacher two to three days a week where the teacher is able to actually facilitate students having access to text materials that they can take home. Students that are in the full distance model would have to have arrangements that are made for families to actually pick up materials at designated points if they're required or needed to really facilitate whatever learning experiences are being established and communicated by the teacher that's connected to the students. Next slide, please. So when we think about the full distance student experience, you know, students again will be rostered with a traditional homeroom teacher. The idea behind that is that if a family, as Dr. Mingle mentioned earlier, elects to select to come back into the hybrid model from the full distance model, they'll already have a designation in terms of a homeroom. That doesn't necessarily mean depending on the way that counts work out that the homeroom teacher is the one always facilitating instruction for that student. There may be another teacher that's connected to that depending on how our numbers and our staffing model works. But again, there would be a designated teacher and that student would be connected to a homeroom. Again, so we have that opportunity to have more fluidity between the models. Students again, as I mentioned, would be assigned a distance learning teacher for their core content instructional areas. They would have opportunities for synchronous instruction and daily supports with a teacher. And again, this is something that, that is important for all of our models. We want to emphasize that we want to have as much interaction between students and between the classrooms that they're connected with. So that is something that we would look for for our full distance learning students as well, that they would have opportunities to interact with hybrid peers and have opportunities again to feel a sense of community and a sense of connection to the school and to groups of students. Okay, thank you, Dr. Mingle. Okay, and now Mr. Ressa will talk about special education.
Thank you, Mr. Kimick. Thank you, Dr. Mingle, Board of Education and community members. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. For special education, as I mentioned by Dr. Mingle earlier in the presentation, students at our ABA programs and learning and language disabilities programs will attend in-person schooling with both cohorts. They will be in attendance, school five days per week and will dismiss, dismiss, excuse me, with buildings. In the afternoon, staff will work with students and their families virtually to address a variety of needs, self-care, life skills, parent training and technology training. For those students that are receiving special education services, they will attend in-person schooling following the cohort model. So for the other students, these include elementary and middle school resource room students, in-class resource or co-teaching students, inclusion classrooms and our behavior disabilities program. Special education services will be delivered both in-person and during distance learning days. We have our integrated pre-K program as well, and that will be five days per week with a modified schedule. This program will allow for our preschool students to attend either their AM or PM session every day with a distance learning support for specific students with special education needs. In the case of all students, general and special education's teachers for our special education students will work together to ensure that students receive all of their accommodations, modifications and small group instruction as necessary. It's very important that all assignments and directions will be presented, maybe presented in a different way in order to meet the needs of these diverse learners. And for specific student information regarding students with IEPs and special needs, parents and families are encouraged to contact their child's case manager. Dr. Mingle?
Okay, so one clarification for something that I presented at the beginning that I forgot to say then. Along that continuum, I meant to share that the continuum and moving across it is not an all or nothing proposition. So one of the things that we've looked at carefully is once we reopen under hybrid one point O and we determine exactly how our spacing works out and how many staff members we have available and how many parents are interested in various options, we will immediately start thinking about how we can maximize time in school facilities with our youngest learners. So we will look to bring kindergartners back more, first graders back more, once we get the hybrid model fully implemented. So I wanted to mention that. And the other thing is, we have been told by our health officials to anticipate regularly having to send an entire classroom worth of students from in-person learning to distance learning and back and forth based on exposure issues rather than the whole building. So the good news is, it is unlikely that we would have to close down a whole school or a whole school district if there was a suspected COVID-19 case. But the bad news is that we have to be prepared that at any moment, a group of students or a classroom of students could have to go back and forth between in-person and distance learning. So much of what you heard from Mr. Kimick and Mr. Ressa is about making sure that we have as much ease as possible to go back and forth. Okay, so that brings us now to the choice, which is the process of selecting as a parent, which model you would like your student to start the school year in. Parents will receive an email tomorrow morning through our student information system that directs them into a form which asks about either the hybrid or the distance learning model. It also asks for whether or not a family is desiring to waive transportation. There will be a more involved, fuller registration process later in August. But we need this information right now so that we can find out exactly how many students we have in each model, which has a lot to do with the next steps that we need for our staffing decisions and for accommodations that we need to adapt and that sort of thing. So the deadline is very quick. Wednesday afternoon, August 5th. We have information sessions available tomorrow. You can attend live. The links are on our website. They will be recorded and posted to the district website as soon as we can get to it tomorrow afternoon so that parents have time, if they can't get there live, to watch it tomorrow night or on Wednesday to help inform them. We'll also take questions that we hear tonight or questions we hear tomorrow and add them to our FAQ documents by Thursday, excuse me, by Wednesday so that all that information is up to date. So parents have that at their, at their disposal. So a couple of closing questions that I think will be very common based on the registrations for tomorrow's information sessions. First of all, what happens if directives change? The hour plan will be updated continuously between now and the first day of school on September 8th, and it will be continuously updated throughout the school year as well. So this is a constant evolution. We need to draw a line in the sand and, and plan for a specific opening, which is hybrid one point O. And then we need to update it as time goes on and communicate that through our briefings each week and through the district website. As I've mentioned a few times now, families will have the ability to request a change to their student's model by giving us a minimum of 30 days' notice. So we were told by the state that we could set the, the amount of time at the semester level that is halfway through the year, at the school, the full school year model, at the end of a marking period or with a minimum of 30 days. We chose the one that gave families the most flexibility, which is 30 days' notice. And we will accommodate those changes whenever feasible. If we can do it faster, we'll certainly do so. And as I said earlier, if a family, what if its family wants to change its decision about waiving transportation? Based on the logistics around transportation routing and state laws about what we are obligated to do regarding transportation, we need people to make a commitment for the school year for this question. So if you're not sure, don't waive the transportation. It's better for you to reserve the seat on the bus for your child and not use it than not reserve a seat and need it later. Additional information and answers to common questions will be in our information sessions throughout the day tomorrow and in the updated FAQs later this week. And as I said at the outset, a more detailed overview of the distance learning experience will be shared at the August 17th board meeting. Once we know how many students are in each model, we'll be able to make final decisions about staffing and exactly what that looks like. With that, I'd like to thank Mr. Ressa and Mr. Kimick for joining me and turn it back over to you, Mr. Bellman.
Thank you so much, Dr. Mingle, Mr. Ressa, Mr. Kimick. This was really a thorough overview. Thank you very much, not just for pointing out what we are doing, but also answering us why certain decisions were made and why we can't do other things. Thank you very much. And with that, I want to open up for the board for discussion. Any of the board members, please. Mr. Franco, I think I see your hand. You're muted.
Zach, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to say, I mean, it's, it's clear how difficult the planning for this return to school has been, even with changes as late as today from the state and from the governor. And it's, I mean, today is the day that these plans are due to the state and today's the day he puts out a modification to what is required. I mean, it's, it's an uphill battle that we're fighting with, with the state. And so I want to just first commend Dr. Mingle and his team for doing yeoman's work. I mean, it's, it's, it's not easy what they're doing and trying to get this implemented. And, and so I give them a lot of credit for the work that's getting done. I will say that I was in support of the, of the current plan because with the four and a half days in school, because I did not believe that the students would have to wear masks sitting at their desks. Now we're being told that they do, which obviously changes things a little bit. But, you know, we're so far down the road, I'm not sure really what can be done. You know, we have to abide by the state requirements. But, Dr. Mingle, I will ask you to take back to the state, if you could, some questions. Because if you read through the modifications to the road back, obviously it says that masks are required. But in the exceptions, there's a bullet here that says face coverings may be removed during gym and music classes when individuals are in a well-ventilated location and able to maintain a physical distance of six feet apart. So why is that only for music and gym? If we are in a classroom that's well-ventilated and six feet apart and they're studying math instead of music, would they not be able to take the masks off? I mean, it's, again, this is coming from the state, so I don't expect the information to be perfect. But these are questions that I would, I would like answers to because I'm still going to push for the ability for our students not to wear, have to wear masks if they're sitting at their desk and they're socially distant. It just doesn't make any sense to me. Yeah, that's all I have for now.
Thank you very much, Mr. Franco. Any other board member? And if I don't see you and you're not on the screen, please unmute yourself. Mrs. Song?
Hi, thank you. I want, I want to explain kind of where I'm coming down on this because I think that the public deserves that. We listened to many hours of personal commentary at our last meeting. We've received a number of pieces of email. I know I've received personal communication as well. And I, I can't speak for anyone else on the board, but I know we're all parents. I'm a parent. I'm a parent of an atypical learner. I'm a parent of children in multiple schools where we're all waiting to see how those schools are going to react to getting our children back to a full-time education. So I have an extraordinary amount of empathy for the parents who are facing this with frustration, sometimes even desperation as they face both childcare issues but also concerns about how do we address the needs particularly of our students who are in IEP and 504 type of support systems. I've read everything. I've relied on the fabulous work of the board's ad hoc back-to-school committee, all of whom I commend and thank. The committees, the subcommittee chairs, all that have worked so very hard. I want to commend the extraordinary work of the administration, Dr. Mingle in particular, as he has led this district to the plan that we have now. But I don't want to forget the efforts of the business office, Pat Leonard, Leonard, who's found the money for where, you know, money sometimes can't be found to address these changes that we could not possibly have anticipated before and have resulted in yet again another modification to our school budget for the coming year. To Mr. Ressa and special services who I know are also grappling with the concerns that I have about delivering services to our special needs students, our students who need speech therapy, who need occupational therapy, who need other types of supports to, you know, succeed in their education. I want to remember the health office and all the nurses that are going to be asked to treat every sniffle or slightly elevated fever as patient zero. To our technology department, it's going to make all the distance learning work. The human resources, all our principals and deans, Mr. Kimick, Mr. Ressa. I really want to thank the teachers. Without the respect and cooperation of the teachers individually and through their unions, I've heard from a few of you. I've heard them express how much they care, how much they care about our kids who need to be in classes. The buildings and grounds department and the transportation department. I've missed anyone. It's inadvertent. Everyone has been working two times, three times the amount of work. This board, this administration, these teachers, all of our staff are why the Warren District Schools draw people to this town. I mean, there are other things. We live in a great town. Town known for its volunteerism, the town with, at the town level, good fiscal management. But at the end of the day, it's, it's, it's all of these people drawing together and including the parents who have sent in their letters that are going to make, I, I really believe, the hybrid model one, two, and eventually a full transition back to in-person learning possible. I really, really do not want anyone in the public who's disappointed by this outcome and I know they exist to feel we didn't hear them. From my perspective, I heard them. I'll sleep over it. I support the administration's proposal today because I do think that it's the best. I know other districts have looked to Warren as leaders in this area and I trust that Dr. Mingle and our teachers will get us back to a five-day in-person instruction model as soon as circumstances allow.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Song. Mr. Breezy, I saw you raising your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman. I, I would echo Mrs. Zahn's sentiments to administration and everyone. Mr. Bellman, I would echo Mrs. Zahn's sentiments to administration and everyone. I would never be able to say it as eloquent as she did, so I'll say I echo her, but it is certainly something that I think all the board members feel. So early this morning, I had asked a question, I guess this is in terms of just being transparent. I had asked Dr. Mingle a question if there was any update from the state regarding potentially needing to, you know, alter the course with regards to the state's previous decision on schools reopening. At the time, Dr. Mingle, rightfully so, wrote back almost immediately and said, "No, nothing, haven't heard anything at this point." Of course, four hours later, we heard from the state and they pulled a state trick on us. They did what they had to do. So I was curious, I don't know, Dr. Mingle, if there was any additional updates after that from the state. I watched what was public from the governor. I don't know what happens if there is any back channels or, you know, expect the next update in two weeks kind of thing, as vague as that may be. My concern in watching the news, and I think I wrote this in the question, is New Jersey itself seems to be trending in the wrong direction. I want kids back in school, but we're also at the mercy of what the state will allow us to do and what they, in essence, dictate to us. So I was just looking for any additional, as much as we plan, and I like the slide where it's a continuum from, you know, facility closures all the way to full school opening, I like that, as much as we're planning to go right, I can't help but fear that at some point, we're either going to stay where we are or we're going to have to roll back sooner than later, just based on numbers alone. So just wanted to see if there's more information on that. I don't think there is, but I figured I would ask, so thank you.
Sure. No, so the only official update we received today was the face covering change. So we received new language that replaced previous state language about face coverings. We have a meeting every Wednesday with our executive county superintendent, who is the person that we go through to get to the state directly. That's where I would bring Mr. Franco's questions. That's where we would get clarification on things. I don't, based on how it's been so far, I don't anticipate that he will have information that we don't already have. Like all of you, I'm watching the press conferences and trying to read between the lines a little bit, read the tea leaves. The fact that the state rolled back to 25 maximum indoor occupancy today is not a good sign for reopening schools. You know, as many people have rightly pointed out in emails or letters or in comments, the only places right now that we're saying we can reopen and serve food and have more than 25 people at a time are schools, and doesn't make a lot of sense. And so you're seeing that in the public media, but no other official communications from the governor's office to us at this point.
Thank you very much, Mr. Breezy and Dr. Mingle. I haven't seen any other board members. First, Mrs. Chu, then Mr. Franco, please.
I too want to echo Patricia's sentiments that the board and through, I'm sure Dr. Mingle has heard a lot of public commentary and tried to incorporate a lot of these changes into this plan. One big difference from two weeks ago is that a lot of school districts have announced plans since, and most, like, the vast majority of those plans are all hybrid and are, many of them, most of them are also short, single-session school days. And so I liken it to having, these schools are enormously complex things to open. I work for a charter school myself, and so I know how difficult it is, and things like even throwing a desk away is like, there's a whole manual on how to do that because it's furniture bought on public dollars. And so you can imagine, like, things like when you, public mentions trailers or office space rentals, like, there's so many regulations on those, and they're not things that can occur overnight. They're not things that can occur in a month's time. And so at some point, I feel like it's kind of like a doctor, like, these are people that know how to run schools professionally, and we need to trust them at some point that they're able to do it. And if we don't, we get second or third opinions. And for me, that, all these other schools that have come out with similar plans, kind of verifies that if 90% of doctors agree on a procedure, then I think that's, that's what's, what is, to me, feels the safest and most effective. And so we've done our due diligence since, and we've looked at all these plans, and this seems to be the going plan, so I support this plan.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Chu. Mr. Franco, please.
Yeah, and for those that aren't aware, maybe just two minutes as to what the governor did say, and you can read into some of this a little bit. So he's changed the requirements for indoor gatherings to the maximum of 25 people or 25% of a room's capacity. I assume that applies to schools. I'm not 100% sure. You know, but what he did exempt from this requirement are weddings, funerals, memorial services, and political activity. So, I mean, you can read into that what you will. And I don't know if there's been an update, but I know there's an article on Thursday, I think it was, that there is proposed legislation in the assembly that there is, that back-to-school is 100% virtual. Obviously, nobody wants that. So we're fighting for, to get the kids back in school as much as we can, and it seems that we're fighting against the state. And so if you really have issues with the plan, you might want to direct your attention to what's coming out of the state, because we have to abide by what's coming out of Trenton, and then not make it easy for us to open back up. That's all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Franco. So far, I haven't seen any other motion by a board member. Wave your hand, use the feature, or unmute yourself if you're not on my screen. It seems that Agenda Item 9, Discussion of the Board Members, is over. With that, I'm moving to Committee Reports. Have we had any committee meetings? I think there was a back-to-school committee.
There was a curriculum committee meeting.
Mrs. Taylor, please move ahead.
So the curriculum committee met today to discuss primarily this back-to-school plan, and we got a overview landscape of the planning for curriculum and instruction for the hybrid model and for distance learning. And there is a team of teachers and staff members who are going to work on the details for this. And I want to emphasize that we are thinking about effective approaches and strategies that apply to both settings. So, like other board members have said, we talked about the feedback that we got from parents about spring remote instruction, and that was really a quick fix, right, for something that we all got thrown into. And so now we are thinking about how to make sure that there is comparable rigor and instructional consistency across the face-to-face and the distance learning model. And like Dr. Mingle told you earlier, and it's been on several documents, August 17th, we'll hear more details about the instructional model, so I encourage everyone to come to attend that meeting as well. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Taylor. Any other committee report?
Mr. Bellman, as you said, the ad hoc committee met, but that was all the topics that were presented in the overview tonight.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mingle. With that, we're moving to public comment. We ask you to be brief and respectful with your comments, and appreciate that among many voices, there will be areas of agreement and disagreement among reasonable people. But in this time, that is so stressful for our children and us all. We need to practice and model good listening and kindness, the skills we so value our own teacher. I remind you that board policy allows for public commentary for three minutes per participant and for blocks of 15 minutes. At such time, the board must then authorize an additional increment of 15 minutes as per our policy. For those that participate, I ask you to turn on your camera. We have received feedback that there are some hearing impaired people that are dependent on the reading, and we ask you to state your name and address for the minutes. With that, please use the raise your hand feature that is built into Zoom. You can have it at the bottom. If you click on the participants, then you click and click on raise your hand. Let me move in. I see Mrs. Goldstein Barsky.
Hi, I'm Goldstein Barsky, 40 Gates Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yes. Can you please turn on your camera? It's on, thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for putting in your time and your effort, and this is, I wouldn't want to, you know, have to make these decisions. So I really trust that everybody on the board worked really hard and are making the best decisions based on the health of our children and students. I just have a few questions. I was wondering, what is the classroom going to look like? Are there going to be shields? Are there going to, like how they have at the nail salon? Are they going to be, are the students going to be allowed to be taught outside if it's a nice day? And I know that a few of the parents were, like, really concerned about the virtual program, and I was just wondering if that was going to be the same as it was in the spring, or is it going to be similar to the in-school portion of learning? And I guess I'm going to ask the hard question is, what is the plan if there is a strike or by the teachers, or, you know, they just all decide to take their sick days all at once? Is there a plan for that? And thank you again.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Goldstein. Administration will take down notes on certain questions, and after the commentary, we'll address some of these questions that have not been answered before. With that, moving on to the next feedback. I see Mariette. Could you please pull up your camera?
Hi, my name is Mariette Jelitovich. I live on 18 King George Road. My children attend ALT. I saw then the plan that it was, they were talking about discussing synchronous learning for the morning meetings across cohorts. And one of the problems that I found with some of the Zoom meetings in the spring was that it's very difficult to manage when you have more than one child, and the meetings are at the same time, and I don't necessarily have the technology to support it. I will have a kindergarten or a second grader and a fourth grader, and it would be nice, and I don't know if this is possible, if you would like to have the cohorts be able to talk with each other, to have different grades have their morning meetings at different times. I know that a morning meeting is like the start of the day. It's a great way to get started, but for people with children in multiple grades, it can be a challenge. I have a, not all of us live in the same size house, so being able to have everybody, I only have one space where my kids can actually work. So it would be nice if they could try to coordinate so that different grades are at different times. That's all.
Thank you very much. I see our next participant is Mrs. Tor. Please enable your camera, state your name and address.
Hey, Chris, sorry, it's not Mrs. Tor, it's the other version. I just have a, it's a Steve Tor, 12 Nottingham Way. I just had a couple of quick comments. Firstly, thanks for the hard work of the board. I think especially after the last meeting, I'm sure you've had quite a lot to think about and do, and we really appreciate, I really appreciate the follow-up. I'm very supportive of the plan. I'm very happy that we'll have the chance to actually get the kids in school, even in a hybrid model. I wasn't necessarily expecting that, given what's going on in some parts of the country. The only other point I'm making, and I have a quick question, is I know that not everybody probably on the line would be as happy as I am, but I'm actually pretty pleased that the state of mandated mask wearing, only because frankly, as well as social distancing, I think that's probably one of the more effective ways of stopping this problem, this disease. And in terms of a responsibility to protect the kids, their families and teachers, I think what we're seeing in terms of post-recovery complications that are infinitely as serious, in some cases if not more, means that, you know, we can't put them in, you know, we can't wrap them in cotton wool, but these are basic things that I would hope that people will support and stick with. And the one question I had was around the teaching staffs themselves, I would assume are quite nervous about coming in, and what steps are being taken and what protocols are being put in place with regard to the teachers? Because it's not just about what they bring into the classroom, it's about what they take home to their families as well. So in terms of their safety on going monitoring policies around if they're exposed to COVID-19 or think they have been, what can they do? Will that be kind of published and shared with the parents as well? That was it. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tor. Next participant is Cindy No. Mrs. No, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Cindy No at 5 Sugarwood Way. I just have a quick question after Dr. Mingle's presentation. So in the previous meeting, we were told that, based on his initial proposal, that it was 40% base with two full days a week. So if we're calculating two weeks, we have 6.5 hours a day at four days, which totals 26 hours in the course of two weeks, which was 40%. What we're saying now is 4.5 hours at most a day at the same five days in the two weeks, and now we're only at 22 and a half hours. So I don't understand how we got four hours essentially less than the 40%, but at the last meeting, we were supposed to be at 50%. Because if we follow that original math, 50% should be 6.5 hours a day times five days, and it should be 32.5 hours, and that's essentially now 10 hours less than the original. So I'm just trying to understand here how that is 50% of in-school time. So if you can answer that, that would be great. That's it, Chris. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. No. Next participant is Mrs. Bodilo.
Hi, how are you? Jessica Bodilo, 9 Brady Road. I have a question. It's a little bit unclear. How are we handling the teachers? Are the children going to have the same teacher for the in-person, for the, say, the AA portion, and then when they're at home, will they be having a different teacher? Is my question. I have another question. What about, like, reach programs? Are they going to continue reach programs for the students in third, fourth, and fifth grade? And I also kind of had, like, a general comment and a question associated with that. When I first started this, I was all for going back to school and seeing the children in school, but one of the things that I said at the first meeting that I've attended was I did not want this to be prison-like. Having the children wear masks, I understand that is a state mandated. I just feel I'd like to know something from the administration as to how they're going to make this be a warm environment for the students and not prison, where they're stuck in these classrooms, can't move around, no recess, no lunch. It's a little disappointing, so I just wanted to see if we can get some feedback in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bodilo. Next on the list is Mr. and Mrs. Tijani.
Hi, Shefali Tijani, 1 Aspen Court. Got a few questions. First one being around the remote portion of the distance, sorry, of the hybrid model. What exactly will that look like? Is, you know, how many hours is that expected to be? Will there be a dedicated teacher for the entire time? And also, how much parental support is expected? So my son is going to be starting kindergarten, and for the younger kids, we can't leave them be. They're going to need our support for lessons and learning and whatnot, and even for parents who are fortunate enough to be able to work from home like we are, we still have work to do and can't, you know, it's not necessarily feasible to spend hours trying to help them with their lessons either. So just trying to get a grasp on what the expectations are for the kids as well as the parents. The other question I have is around aftercare and whether there will be aftercare on, at least the days that the child is supposed to be in school. and whether there will be aftercare on at least the days that the child is supposed to be in school. And then for the, my final question is around the dismissal hours. And what will those hours look like and where the dismissal hours? Specifically around lunch, because depending on what the hours will be, will the kids be home in time for, for lunch? Or are they having lunch at 2:00? Which, you know, it's like especially for the younger kids, is a little more difficult, you know, to have them have lunch that late when they're used to having it two hours before. So just kind of from a logistics perspective, what are these hours going to look like? Uh, that was it for me.
Wonderful. Thank you for your contribution. And once again, at the end of the session, administration will answer some of these questions. Moving on to the next participant, Mr. or Mrs. Joki.
Hello, I'm Jaclyn Joki from Nine Heritage Drive. Basically, you know, I'm disappointed with the current model. I know a lot of people are supporting it, but I do agree with Cindy No. And, um, and I felt what had come out of the previous meeting was that families had felt that time in school and with face-to-face learning was extremely important in order to optimize our children's education. And in the presented model, we've lost face-to-face time. Um, in addition, I know that people are disappointed in the now requirement for face masks to be worn in school. Um, however, I support that because realistically, I think that's the only way to safely get children back to school. So if you want to send your child to school, they're going to have to be wearing a mask. And unfortunately, you know, we're all weighing risks and benefits in this situation. And children, when they're in school, there's associated risks with that, which were already opening up by having them in school. And having them wear masks, there's a downside that people have, you know, with the quality or experience that they're going to be getting in school is going to be different than what it was before. However, that in-person learning experience cannot be, um, I don't think can confidently be replicated in distance learning. And I have a lot of concerns that what this proposed new hybrid distance learning program, this distance learning, sounds to me like it's going to replicate similar experiences that we had particularly for the young students. And if you're having more than, if you have more than one child trying to accommodate both their needs, and now it sounds like there's a different teacher perhaps monitoring the distance learning than the in-school teacher. And now you're trying to cohort virtually these two units. And I have high concerns that it's going to be an ultimate failure or not successful for certain children's individual needs. And I know Dr. Mingle presents how the, the state, you know, offers, this program offers a lot of flexibility. And I want to know, is there flexibility and options for individual families in order to, do they have the option that they can reject the distance learning component as provided by the school and implement their home, their own home optimized learning program at home for their children without losing out on the in-person experience?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Joki. Uh, there is a user with the name Ken P. Mr. Ken P., please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me, Chris and everybody?
Yes.
Oh, hi, hi, everybody. Thanks for the opportunity. My name's Ken Pincus. I live at 3 Birchmont Lane in Warren. I've lived here for 15 years. I'm actually a licensed help officer and I work full-time as a help officer. So listening to everybody's comments, it is a lot of work. Every day, information changes. So it's, it's, it's really hard to adapt on the fly. But one of the, the common items I'm seeing here, the common issues is the wearing of masks. And I'm totally pro of wearing masks because we're not only protecting the children, but you have to think of the adults, the teachers that may be older than 50 years old working there. And you have to protect them as well, especially if they have underlying health conditions. So if you allow the kids not to wear masks and for some reason the, the teachers walk, which they want to do inherently, walk up to the kids. Um, if they get closer than six feet and they even talk to the kids, they could come. It's very transferable, communicable. So it's real important that everybody wears masks and that these masks are not N95 masks. That's another thing. These masks are just simply masks that keep in the virus into each person. N95 masks are what they're not wearing. And N95 masks are totally different from this. This, this, the exposure when you're wearing regular masks with everybody else, just normal surgical mask, if you're not wearing one, it's very minimal. If you're wearing N95, which nobody is, um, those are the best masks you can wear. Um, so I'm totally in favor of that. Um, also, some items were talked about, about the procedures for checking into schools. It said you're going to have additional screenings. I've advised my school system to use thermal cameras or temperature monitors to make sure that any kids that come in are monitored. Because if they are having high temperatures, that is the time that they're shedding the most. Um, and you want to stop them from entering the school. So that, these screenings need to be reemphasized what you're doing. Um, also, I'm, I'm trying to be quick with this. There's a lot of information I have. But the ventilation systems are key here. Um, a lot of schools don't have air conditioning. So if you're opening up on a hot day and just opening up windows, you could have asthma conditions. And the heat and humidity does not help the situation. You need a filtering system with maybe Mer filters. If you don't have that, it's a problem. So I don't know what schools have air conditioning. I heard many schools don't, and I know it's a big investment, but it's asking for trouble. If you bring the kids in there and there's no ventilation in the nurse's office, there's no ventilation in bathrooms, and there's no ventilation in the classrooms. So it's something you really need to consider because that air sits there. If it doesn't move, it has to move. Um, I, I, there has to be touch-free faucets. I don't know if you have those. A lot of things need to be retrofitted. Um, I'm going to stop there because I probably could go on, but I just didn't want to stop anybody from talking. That's all I have for now, Chris. Thanks for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pincus, and you were perfectly in three minutes. That brings us to the 15-minute mark. Do I hear a motion from a board member, Mr. Breezy? Could you?
I'd like to make a motion to extend public commentary by 15 minutes.
I, uh, Mr. Franco's second.
Mr. Bellish.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Brzez.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor. Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Mr. Todd Weinstein, please go ahead. Turn on your camera. State your name and address.
Hi, uh, thanks for taking my, my sentiment, 16 Nottingham Way, Todd Weinstein. Uh, I want to thank the board, thank Dr. Mingle, and thank all the administrators and folks involved in the, the return to school. I know these are unprecedented times. You guys are spending unprecedented amount of time and energy doing what you're doing, so thank you. Um, I have two questions. One is, at what date will we know how many kids will be attending which schools? And if those numbers are deemed low enough, uh, will students slash parents who want to attend more regularly be allowed to? The next question I have mirrors a lot of, uh, the earlier sentiment because the prior board meeting, uh, much of the discussion was centered on, what are the exact plans and differences that are going to be implemented from this past spring's distance learning, which everyone was challenged with? And what is that going to look like come the fall? Um, I think that's really going to impact parent decision-making on whether their kids return or not. Um, and I think that's a very important thing that needs to be as detailed as possible. So the more you can share, the earliest you can share it, um, would be greatly appreciated. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weinstein. Next, we have, we have Mrs. Stacy Sackett.
Hi, how are you? I'm Stacy Sackett, 7 Trinity Place. So I just had two questions. Really, they really pertain to the middle school. Um, the first question I had was, um, will the students be assigned to the same small groups of, of children? And then will that group travel together from class to class? Um, and then my second question was, if the schools end up having to close again and have to go 100% virtual, will the kids' classes then go live and synchronous? Um, particularly for the academic classes? So those were the two questions I have.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Stack, second.
Thank you.
Next on the list, I have an account with the name Vaishali A.
Hello. Hi, this is Vaishali. I'm from 8 Orchard Way. And I have, uh, one specific question, uh, pertaining to COVID. So what is the plan or is there any plan if a child or a teacher falls sick? And the child or a teacher goes for COVID testing? What protocol will the school follow? Will they inform everyone for contact tracing? Or will they wait for the results to come in and let the child and, or, and/or teacher come to school? And the second question is, if a child or teacher is tested positive, then are the people in contact with the child or teacher are quarantined for 14 days or how does that work? That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mr. and Mrs. Pucci.
Hi there, Nellie Pucci, 33 Washington Valley Road. I just want to make a comment. This past fall, I participated as a co-chair of the Equity and Consistency for the District's five-year plan. Our goal was to provide each student with a rich array of academic enrichment and diverse social experiences. Personally, I believe this goal should be reassessed or put on hold. I believe this school year will create inequity within our district. Some parents will be able to provide tutors on the virtual learning days. Other households will have to become a one-parent income household. Some families will leave our district for private schools that are offering five full days in-person schooling. So I leave you with this for the district. Equity in education requires putting systems in place to ensure that every child has an equal chance for success. That requires understanding the unique challenges and barriers faced by individual students or by populations of students and providing additional supports to help them overcome those barriers. While this in itself may not ensure equal outcomes, we all should strive to ensure that every child has equal opportunities for success. This is Mark.
Hi, Mark Pucci, 33 Washington Valley Road. Thank you guys for your time, as well as your tireless work. I know everybody's working around the clock. I'll be very, very brief. Just have one quick point and one question. Like others, I also thought that a 50% model would have more time than a 40% model. So I'm a bit confused how we have 10% more, yet less time. Um, it just doesn't work for me mentally. Um, on one side, I'm a big fan of having the core subjects be in person. But on the other side, it doesn't really seem to be aligned with the spirit of what the board decided during last meeting, so I'm a little bit confused there. Um, now for the question, when, I believe is what it was referred to, or I believe it's called what I need, um, is allocated 25 minutes per in-person physical day. The time, uh, at school is, you know, very limited, as was indicated earlier. So I'm very curious as to precisely what is when and what is really the plan behind it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. and Mrs. Pucci, for your contribution. Moving on to the next on the list, Mr. or Mrs. Walpaw.
Hey, Chris, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I've got a couple of questions. I'm hoping you can get a response back.
Please state your name and address first.
Peter Walpo, 50 Red Hill Road, Warren. So bus cleaning, so when they, right now, the high school is going to pick up first, obviously, then middle school and elementary school. What are we doing about bus cleaning? Because the elementary school will be the last ones to get picked up, and that means that they'll be most infected by that time. But also, are the children going to be sitting six feet apart on the bus? Because right now, the bus doesn't have no space, even if you do 50% to be six feet apart. So they're going to be ordering rows, bus seats, whatever, so, um, that's one question. The other question is, or comment, last term, when we were getting toward classes, the teachers were going off and saying, log on to this website. They got on for literally five minutes and said, log on to this webpage and good luck. Okay, and then the kids have to do everything themselves. Some of the classes were language, like Spanish. We were told, my son was told, hey, go on to this page and learn Spanish. You can't learn Spanish by looking at a video or else we don't need the teachers to teach. I mean, realistically, what are we doing here? So what I'm saying is this has to be live. We can't do what we were doing. Same thing with other classes. We were told, my son, kids were told, go on to his website and learn. And for five minutes, they got a live introduction, then they were told, go learn. I'm not sure how we're going to get the kids to learn like that. But when we say we're going to have lectures or whatever, alternate, alternate days, we have to make sure that they're live, otherwise it's useless to me. And I think a lot of people feel that. Um, the other thing is, I agree with Cindy. It seems like we're losing hours. And I'm not sure how that's possible right now. So also wanted to get some feedback on that to make sure we all are on the same page and we understand what's going on. But like I said, my most critical concern, I'll reiterate, is that kids have to be taught by a live person, whether it's the odd days or whenever they're being taught, no videos. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walpaw. Moving on to Mrs. Singleton. Mrs. Rachel Singleton.
Thank you. Um, uh, I, I need more confidence in the virtual learning component of the school year because I'm, I'm, oh, sorry, Rachel Singleton, you'd think I'd know this. Rachel Singleton, 22 Delaware Trail West. Um, I'm leaning to hybrid because my children are atypical learners. So both aspects of the hy, of the hybrid are important to me. Um, are we, are you going to go along with the BME grading again? Or will it be changed back to the old-style grading? Um, how will children with IEPs be taught, assessed, and given their services and modifications? A reduction of in-person schooling has a more significant adverse impact on younger children than older children in, in the high school, as well as on students with disabilities and English language learners. And to that, are you aware that the District of the Chatham has come up with a way for all IEPs and English as a second language to be in school every single day if they want? This would be optimal, given the predicament we find ourselves in with our atypical learners. So far, what's being presented is pretty much suboptimal based off the one slide, which actually I couldn't see because I got a blank screen the entire time that the presentations were going on. Um, it's as if these kids don't matter as much as they should, the kids with the IEPs. They're already struggling with normal schooling when COVID isn't an issue. They're already struggling to maintain their personal trajectory. How is this going to improve their education to help them shine brighter if they don't get the special ed teaching every day that they're legally entitled to? So we limped along in the spring and it was unhealthy and bred toxic relationships at home, and the stress and anxiety was huge. Um, they're like cats if I turn my back. How am I supposed to keep three atypical learners occupied when they're at home? Um, I want to turn to the substitutes. Um, if there are not enough certificated teachers able to come back, how will you vet the substitutes to make sure that they're actually qualified to teach and not just be a body in the classroom? Because the qualifications for a sub are not hard to achieve for your average 19, 20-year-old with one year of university successfully completed. Our children deserve to be taught by professionals who trained in pedagogy and teaching, who knew their curriculum. A sub with the minimum requirements is little more than a babysitter. And also to that, um, how will the efficacy of subs be ensured? I pay my cleaning lady more for four hours' work than a Warren substitute gets for a day. And every hour in school, face-to-face, and I count some more than ever. Um, also, on to the end of the substitutes. Um, I know that not all substitutes are told, even though there's no law preventing this, uh, which children need specific and special help in the class. So how will we ensure that if, uh, if a class has a substitute, that they know how, how to approach that child to understand what their learning needs are?
We are at the end of the three minutes.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Perfect time. Moving on to Giulio Fumoso, please. Mr. Giulio Fumoso.
Here we are. Sorry about that.
Perfect.
Jennifer and Giulio Fumoso to Ashwood Court. Um, thanks for, for your time today and, and going through the details. I do have a couple of questions. One is you mentioned, um, the attesting by parents of being
the attesting by parents of being symptoms-free for our children, will there be temperature checks before they enter the bus? If they were to provide transportation and go on the bus? This way, we don't have to wait until they're actually in the school building before they're tested. And then, secondly, have you thought about putting cameras, webcams, in each of the classrooms so that they can, the kids that are remote, can hear the lectures that are happening in the school? And if there isn't money in the budget for those cameras, they're relatively inexpensive, perhaps, parents can work together to find a way to help with defray the cost for that? That's it.
Thank you very much. Next on the list, Mr. Joya. Mr. Adam Joya.
Hey, Chris. Adam Joya, 14 Sherwood Way. So last board meeting was long board meeting. A lot of people vocalized a lot of things, so I'm going to try to vocalize some concerns. The board did a great job with the preemptive strike. It sounds like we may be backpedaling to distance learning. I'd like to hear more about that. I'd like to see the platform. We haven't seen any of that. There's a very good likelihood that that's where we're going to be going. Chris, you started off talking about teaching. It's simple. You've got to engage the parents. You've got to engage the students. So I'm going to give an example of communication. On July 17th, I wrote a six-page letter. I emailed to the board, Mr. Mingle. I got three board members that acknowledged they received it, and I got an ad office of Mr. Mingle. Said he'd reply back on the 20th. I waited till the 22nd. I asked Mr. Mingle if he'd reply back. The board was going to reply back. He said he had a problem with the board, to contact them. I asked Mr. Mingle again if he would reply to my letter, and he basically said, "Thank you for your comments." So I'd like to know from the board, you think that's an acceptable response from a paid administrator? We're not getting the answers we want, guys, okay? So we're not trying to bust anyone's chops, but we're desperately seeking answers. We're not saying you're not working hard, but that's not the case. The Q and A, it was recommended that parents should look to the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. Great idea. Unfortunately, there's a lot of parents and people in Warren that have their own businesses, so they can't use that. Also, this act is only good for 12 weeks. This started back in March, so most of those families have already used that or will come close to using that. So I ask that you be sympathetic to those folks. Planning. You know, it was a brutal board meeting. We were up until 1:00 in the morning. What I want to know is, I want to know when the board, the entire board, became informed to a point they felt comfortable to make a vote. Okay, July 20th, 4:00 said, "I'm going to make a mask for parental act," yet they were pressured into making a vote because they were threatened that the board would fail if a vote wasn't put through. So I asked the board, "If you think that was in the best interest of the teachers and the children, if you don't have all the data you need, ask for it." And I heard you guys asking for it. I was proud of you guys. But then we started to buckle, and it got late, and a vote pushed through. So appreciate everything you guys are doing, but you've got to listen to us. You know, we're talking to you guys. We're not getting the feedback we want. I really do want to hear about the distance learning because it was tough. Couple different children, four different homesites to go to. I'm hoping they see some kind of maybe demonstration or something. Maybe you guys took away some best practices, and that could be shared. But right now, I'm in more fear of distance learning than I am of the coronavirus. So I'm asking you guys to help me get comfortable with distance planning. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goya. With that, we are approaching the next 15-minute window from the boards. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to extend public commentary.
Second, this is Aaron Bellish.
Can we have a discussion?
There's a motion on the table. We can only discuss the motion.
Right, exactly. If I may, while I appreciate all of the public commentary, if we could amend the motion to agree that we would end it following the last raised hand we currently have?
That would be...
I see no reason to do that. I mean, we're not going that late yet. There seems to be 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 people left.
Right.
More people decide to chime in after that, and we should allow them, I would think. Well, look, I think we'll get through the next six people in this 15-minute cycle. We could deal with that. Your issue of the next, you know, when this next 15 minutes expires, Mrs. On, I think, if that's your concern. I don't think there's any reason to cut it off now.
Is the board ready for a vote?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Bellish?
Yes.
Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Brzezak?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio?
Same.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Same.
Thank you. Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Same.
Mrs. Zahn?
Upstate.
Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next on the list, Ms., oh, the list was just updated. That was my fault. Ms. Clark was next, sorry. Mrs. Lori Clark.
It's a little dark here. Sorry about that, folks. Lori Clark and Jeff Clark, 50 Skyline Drive in Warren. I really only have a comment that I think it's a little presumptuous to ask parents to commit to deciding on the hybrid or the 100% virtual model before the details on the curriculum, whether it's hybrid or remote, are announced, which is not going to be until August 17th, which is definitely after the August 5th deadline. Details are important in making these decisions. So I'm sure there's no way we can get those details before August 5th, but we may want to reconsider allowing parents time to reconsider their decisions after we hear what the curriculum is going to look like on August 17th. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Clark. Moving on to the next on the list, Jennifer Costa.
Hi, can you all see me? This is Jennifer Costa at 18 Upper Warren Way. I'm sorry, once again, this is Matthew Klein at 18 Upper Warren Way. Jen and I are married. We just don't take each other's names. So anyway, really, I've heard several parents, I guess, mention this, right? The ability to see what kind of technology we're going to be leveraging for distance learning, if it does happen. I think that's a huge decider in how you make the choice to send or not send, or where you choose to land, right? I can tell you from my own personal experience with my atypical learner distance learning last year, you may as well have given me his report card and his grades because I'm now an expert at 7th grade curriculum or the 7th grade history and science. But I will say it was markedly different in summer fun. He attends extended school year every year, and the fact that he had one-on-one, you know, FaceTime or interaction with his teacher via video learning or video conferencing, or whatever you want to call it. It not only did wonders for his ability to work independently, but also his ability to retain information, comprehend his assignments, and work more as a, you know, regular functioning student. So I think it's imperative that we actually get a look at what technology is going to be leveraged, or at least be told what technology is going to be leveraged and how it will be utilized for both distance learning, ad, hybrid, 1 and 2, A and B, X, Y, and Z. I think those are important. I've thrown my hat in the ring. I work for a technology provider called Ring Central, and this is not some sort of shameless plug. I mean, I've offered this multiple times in secret and confidence via carrier pigeon or whatever, but to the members of the board, you know, we're happy to, you know, try and help where we can, right? Easily making teachers able to communicate with wide, you know, wide numbers of students at a moment's notice. So, you know, I'm all ears, happy to lend a hand, expertise, resources from our company, from wherever, you know, to the best of our ability. But more than anything, I think, whatever technology platform you use or choose, all of them are great. It's important that the parents get a chance to see what that is, as well as figure out if it's a best fit for all the students in town. So that's all. Thanks so much. And once again, thank you for everyone's tireless work. I mean, this is absolute craziness. So thank you again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Klein, especially for the warm words at the end. Moving on to Mrs. Silver. Please go ahead.
Hi, actually, it's Mr. Silver, 35 Quail Run in Warren. I just had a couple of brief questions, primarily revolving around the distance learning. Is there some reason why there can't be live instruction? In other words, I know some school districts are having, splitting classes into A-B with the A group, the A-group B cohort being in class while the B is remote in the same classroom, learning the same material with the same teacher. And then the following week, the B students are in class and the A students are not, and they vary by subject. So everybody gets the same learning experience. I'm with a lot of the other people where I do not understand how this is going to work, both in terms of the instruction. Live instruction, to me, seems far more valuable for my children, anyway, than what went on in the spring. And to the person who described waiting till the 17th for the description of the curriculum, and yet we have to make a decision tomorrow, does seem a little bit out of whack. I guess that's my main question. Thank you.
I did have a question, though. I'm sorry. I actually didn't plan on it, but I will ask, and it may be obvious, but Mr. Kimmich made mention of that when the groups are divided and they're broken down into their cohorts, that there will be a place for your child regardless if you choose to do distance learning full-time for now. This concerns me in that if we break these two, for argument's sake, 3rd grade into two groups, and then those two groups are then broken into two more groups. So you have four groups, basically, in your 3rd grade. What if one of those in-school groups, 10 kids, and of them, eight choose to do 100% distance learning? Will the breakdown of those groups then be reassessed so that one cohort does not now have two or three kids in a classroom, and the other cohort now has 10 or 12, or whatever that number is that we can have? Will that assessment be redone when we know who is choosing full-distance learning versus the hybrid model?
Yeah, and lastly, if I got 30 seconds, I didn't understand why science and social studies are far less time to the person who talked about when, or whatever that was. I'm confused by that as well. Why is science diminished relative to other subjects? And lastly, this idea that they're not getting, they're getting less time in this 50% model than the old 40% model in the classroom seems just, I don't follow the logic of that either. So it would be great if that could be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. and Mrs. Silver. Mr. David Rosen, please turn on your video. State your name and address.
Hi, David Rosen, 101 Briarwood Drive West. My question revolves around the attestation form that I've heard about today. My question is, will the attestation form carry force of law? This is a public school. This is a public document. Will parents have to sign it? If, and how deep and how far will this attestation form go? If a parent travels for work and they go to one of the states that's on Murphy's No-Fly Zone, so to say, where there's an automatic quarantine, does the quarantine then apply to the child of the parent that traveled for work? This could be logically extended to healthcare workers in town. There are heroes, and they're doing a great job, but they are exposed to COVID-19. They bring it home to their children. Their children then come to the school. What will happen with that on the form? How, so I want to see the form. I'd like to know what the form is going to be like, how deep it goes, how we're going to keep it logical and rational so that children aren't precluded from going to school because they have a healthcare hero at home or because they have someone who travels for work? And then I'd like to know about the force of law behind it. If someone, if, for example, with the two-week quarantine, if someone takes a trip at the end of the summer and they go to a No-Fly Zone state, they come back, they lie, they say, "No, we weren't in one of those states in the last 14 days." Have they committed perjury? Will they be prosecuted? Is it a crime? So that's my question. Other than that, keep up the great work, everyone. Chris, fantastic meeting. You've kept it moving. I think you're doing a great job. And, you know, full-time school, obviously, is the best deal. And I will also say that a lot of people have commented on the 40% versus 50%. I think what was lost is the apples-to-apples comparison that you move to half-days. So once you move to half-days, that's where the, we lost the time, so to say, on the 50% versus 40%. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosen. Next, we have, since we are not allowing commentary twice before everybody has been heard, we're moving on to Mrs. Minari, Rich Minari.
There we go. Chris, can you see me?
Absolutely. Please move ahead. State your name and address.
Oh, there I am. Michael Minari, 1 Mundialane, Warren, New Jersey. I wasn't going to say anything, but then after one of the board members said that they wanted to cut off the commentary, I thought I'd speak up. Because one of the points I made last time, and I'll make it again this time, is that it, and I feel like there's a thread, not everybody, but I feel like there's a number of people who are saying that you're just not hearing the community. And again, the communication between the board and the school district and the community is just not there. An example of that is, tonight, the Watchong Hills Regional High School is also having their board meeting where they're talking about the same thing. And so when you've got kids in high school and in the elementary schools, now we're forced to choose, right? We have to be in two places at once. That's just a practical example of this stuff. So I really think you guys should think about what the goals are for the school system. Where are we going? Because it doesn't seem like, it seems like we're going somewhere, but it doesn't seem like we're going in the same direction the community wants it to go. I did have some quick questions. One was with respect to the opt-out on the bus. Is, when does that have to happen? And is there a monetary dimension to that? The other, another question is on parent resources. If we're going to be asked to do remote instruction and support remote instruction for our children, will we be provided tutorials? How, at what point will we be introduced to all the online learning and all the different apps and whatnot? That, that we, well, I don't know if we're going to use the same ones as we did in the spring, but given the level of instruction and the level of education we had, I hope that that changes. But when will we be allowed to either demo that stuff or be instructed on how that stuff works so that we can then teach our kids? Because the teachers won't be doing that. And then also, how does school count, given that there's time in the classroom and time outside, remote? I know that, obviously, in the spring, most of the remote stuff did not count. They got passing grades or whatever it was. How does that change next year? Are they, how are the kids evaluated? That would also be good to know. And with that, I will turn it back over. Thanks, Chris.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Next on the list is YU.
Hi, this is me. Can you hear me? Okay?
I can hear you very well. Please state your name and address.
Yeah, this is Ying Ming Zhou, 7 Downingtown Court. I think, and my question probably is similar to what people have mentioned earlier, but if I missed it, I apologize. My question is just that, when it comes to distance learning, right? Just exactly how is it going to be, you know, provided? If I recall correctly, in this past semester, for virtual learning, where students were just given some assignments, and they just followed the instructions to complete the assignments, right? Without seeing the teacher's face and all, right? But now, maybe in this coming semester, with the distance learning, they can use Zoom like this. We can see each other. We can see live instructions and see the teacher's face, right? Or Google Meet, or Microsoft Teams, all these things so that they can just see the same kind of instructions in class, in-person instructions that the teacher will be giving. So perhaps that can be considered. I hope you will be considered. That's my only question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the list, Mrs. Rosa Krauser. Please go ahead. Mrs. Rosa Krauser, please turn on your camera.
Got it. Got it. Thank you. Rosa Kraus to Holly Drive. So my question is, again, just like many parents, it's the distant learning. Obviously, during summer fun, it was livestreamed. Why? Was it because it was paid? Whereas now, for the... Was it because it was paid, whereas now, for the current upcoming school year, I have not heard anything regarding it being livestreamed? Again, just like many parents, I feel like if a child, especially like mine, who's a A-type learner, who obviously now is on the IP, who's not going to be in school five days a week, so I believe that if he at least had that in-person, not in-person, but virtual live support, it would help him. So I have, you know, that to me is my biggest concern, too. I have not heard that tonight. And that's, I think, some of us that were pushing for that five-day in-school, if we had that comfort level that it would be livestreamed, I think some of us would be more, I guess, happier or more content, whereas honestly, right now, it's still not good. It's still not good. And like Cindy and everybody else, I mean, how do we go from going from 50% now down to less hours in school? I just don't get it, it's disappointing. I wanted more, I got less. And another thing, it was, I don't appreciate that the board that would try to take these 15 minutes away from us. That was very disappointing, because as parents, we are entitled to that. You are representing us, and that was pretty shameful. Pretty shameful that that was taken, tried to be taken from us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There, we move to Mr. Keith Brothers.
Hi, this is actually Jacqueline Brothers, 13 Trinity Place. So just want to say thank you to the board and teachers for continuing to focus on making the school year as successful as possible. I know these are not the circumstances any of us expected to be in or want to be in, so thank you. So if parents do not respond by the deadline with their preference for the hybrid versus the 100% distant learning, will their child or children be defaulted to one of the two models? My second question's a little similar to one asked earlier. Once a deadline is closed to submit your preference for which model you wish for your child, and the administration knows how many kids are falling into each of the groups, if there's a specific class level where the number who have selected hybrid are small enough, would you consider allowing those children to go five days a week versus doing the A/B flip-flopping? And if so, could this be done at the school and even the class level? So if there was, you know, if first grade at Mount Horeb is small enough where people, like enough kids have said, "I'm going to do 100% distant learning," and the group that would go to do the hybrid is small enough, could those kids be allowed to go five days a week? Could we do it at that, you know, minute level versus the whole district? And then, are there still plans to have the days off in November for teachers' convention? You know, I was on the last meeting, but hearing that the timing of instruction is now reduced compared to the last meeting. Are there any plans to just reevaluate non-holiday days off to kind of make up for that lost time? Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have reached the end of the 15-minute block. There's no further motions from people that have not spoken yet.
I'll make a motion to allow the two people with hands up to ask their questions still.
I'll second that, that's Mrs. Zhang. But with a comment.
Please go ahead.
I just want to make it clear that, because I hear a couple of parents are a little aggravated at my previous comment on the previous motion, I want to hear from everyone whose hand is up, but I also want to get to the point where the administration starts answering some of these questions. So while we, you know, we have two remaining hands, I'd like to limit it to those two, so that in fact, many of these questions which are repetitious begin to receive some sort of response from the administration. It's not a desire to cut off the commentary of parents, it's a desire to get to where some of the answers are actually shared.
Thank you.
There are two hands up, I have no issue making the motion, just to allow those two, and then move on.
And I second that.
Mrs. Leona, please go ahead.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Brazee.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Zhang.
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Ms. Leona. Moving on to Mrs. Mariet.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm on again. Mariet Jelitovic, 18 King George Road. I had two thoughts particularly, and I meant to say this earlier, in relation to the busing issue. I understand that they want one kid per seat. I'm wondering why family units couldn't potentially sit together to allow for spacing? I mean, my kids share the same bedroom, so why would they need a separate seat? Maybe that could help alleviate the busing situation. I obviously don't know the legalities of that, but I just was throwing it out there in case it hadn't been thought of. And then, I've heard a lot of parents express their desire for synchronous learning, and I know that for me, it would be rather difficult, but I understand their desire for it. If it would be possible to ensure if the district does move towards that route, that asynchronous learning was also available, particularly for the elementary schools...
Stop it, Jacob.
Can everybody please mute? Please go ahead.
Particularly from the elementary schools, because say, for example, there's a technology glitch, and all of a sudden, your computer goes out, then your kid has potentially missed that lesson. And for younger kids, they may need to be able, they're not going to be able to potentially ask a question, and they may need the teacher to repeat it. If it's asynchronous, I can rewind it. But I do understand that many parents felt like that wasn't enough, and I support synchronous learning for those, but I would like to potentially consider both options so that people could try to accommodate their families the best way that they could. That's all.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Mrs. Goldstein Barsky.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can please also turn on the camera for those that are hearing.
Yes, sorry, sorry.
Thank you so much.
It's not my laptop. Okay, sorry that I'm asking a second question, but I just wanted to know, what is the, if there's a state limit on the rate of infection, like, you know, 3%, I heard today is what New York City is going to do, so 3% the school shuts down. Do we have those same guidelines? And is it per town, or is it per school? Or is it based on only student population and teacher population, or is it based on the entire town's numbers? Thank you. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Goldstein. With that, we're at the end of the public commentary, and...
All the questions were asked, and now he's going to hopefully start answering.
Please, everybody mute. Mr. Mingle, Dr. Mingle, could you please address some of the questions that stood out and were repeated?
Yes, they have one second to organize.
Absolutely.
All right. So I'll have to scroll back and forth, I apologize, but I tried to group some things together by topic to make it a little bit easier. And before I go into a few of them, I certainly won't be able to address all of them right now, so I just want to remind everybody that the questions will all be shared with the staff who will be running the information sessions, I'll be there, all of our committee chairs will be there, all of our principals will be there tomorrow, so that we can address things that we couldn't address tonight as well. And again, those will be recorded, and everybody will have access tomorrow afternoon. So, first of all, on all the health and safety type questions, and I'm going to actually start with the last one that we just heard, and as Mr. Pincus said earlier, there are local health officials responsible for each community. In Somerset County, there are around five of them. We meet all the district superintendents in the county, meet with that group every single Monday afternoon at 3:00 PM, and they give us what they believe the best guidance is, which is in response to changing guidance from the DOE, they report to the Department of Health. One of the challenges we're facing right now is the guidance that they might personally believe in, first of all, doesn't always align across the group of them, and doesn't necessarily align with different organizations. So we have different guidance from the CDC than we have from the New Jersey Department of Education, for example, and they have to land on what they're going to recommend. They did share with us a draft that addressed many of the things people asked about tonight around contact tracing, do we open or close depending on outbreaks, so on and so forth, but they asked us today, or they informed us today, that that will be changed and updated again this week. So I'm not comfortable sharing, because we can't promise that it's not going to be different health department guidelines. So, you know, for example, around how far the contact tracing will go, and who will make the final determination. So I want to be careful not to say things that I'm not really authorized to say, because we respond to the health department. So I apologize that some of those questions can't be answered, that's one of the reasons we made health and safety our focus for the meeting that is closest to the school year on August 31st, because we'll have all those outlined. We will publish tomorrow on the district website the backup information behind the one-sentence summaries you saw in tonight's presentation, which we'll go into a little bit more detail, but health and safety protocols, there is no state guidance about when we open or when we close. That is all, at this point, an individual school district discretion, which is one of the challenges, so our health officials are working with us on that. So even things like whether we take temperatures as students arrive at school is a debatable point. The CDC guidelines are different from the DOE guidelines, are different from our county health officials, and so we have to work through all of that. Distance learning, I totally understand the general, the feeling about we need more detail about distance learning. We all agree with you, we brought to the curriculum committee today at 4:00 PM a draft of what that looks like. Until it gets completely vetted and finalized for the next meeting, the summary that Mr. Kimmich shared today is where we are. So I'll just clarify a few things, though, that might seem like they were lost maybe in the presentation. This year, in the fall, when we reopen, students who are at home, whether they're on full-distance learning or in the hybrid, and they just happen to be home on that day, will be following the same schedule as the students who are in school facilities, meaning they will have a math class and an ELA class, science sorts, et cetera, at a set time, and that time will be the same time that their counterparts in school are going to that class. And there will be built into that window synchronous time every day, whether you're in full-distance learning or not, to get lessons from our certified teachers. And what we're working out through our committees, the board has a resolution in front of it tonight to approve people to do this work over the next several weeks, is ways to get the students in different, whether they're at home or in person, distance learning, hybrid, whatever, to interact and communicate together. So it's possible that a teacher might deliver a mini lesson to everybody using technology, whether they're home or in school, and then there's time for kids to work together in groups like they would in a regular school setting, across and using the technology. So all of that, I totally understand that there's not enough information yet, and I understand there won't be enough information before people have to make their initial decision. What I would recommend, and this kind of goes to the question about, you know, what's the default? The default, our program that we're offering is the hybrid model. That's the default expectation for all kids. Parents who choose distance learning are choosing the alternative to the school district model. So if you're not sure, or you're feeling like you don't have enough information, you should be choosing the in-person model. It is much easier for us to accommodate a change from in-person to distance on August 17th or sometime before the school year, if parents feel like, once they hear about distance learning, they'd rather go that way, then it would be the other way around. So if you're not sure, or if you feel like you need more information, I would recommend choosing the hybrid, and then you can always make a request for adjustment at that point. So again, just to be very clear, all students will have synchronous learning with teachers every single day, and... Whether, in either model, and there'll be interaction across the different cohorts. The specific, we heard concerns in the spring, and we agree with them about all the different places I have to go as a parent or a student, those are things that our, the teaching staff that we're bringing back to work in the month of August on the agenda tonight, will be working on developing consistent district-wide opportunities. That's one of the reasons why we needed to move from a full day to an early dismissal, is that that coordination across in-person and distance learning between classrooms, between schools, is a whole new way of teaching and learning. So we're again implementing a brand-new model in the fall from the spring. And as several have said, that's been a desire of a lot of parents. We responded to an emergency situation as best we could, got better as time went on, and now we're planning for another model in the fall. Our teachers need time for that, we need time to coordinate it, which is where some of that time at the end of the day comes from, as well as the travel time back home. So using that as a segue to the time differences, there ultimately, the time of academic on-task is about the same in a four-day, full-day versus five-day, partial day. As Mr. Rosen pointed out, that was another big difference between where we were two weeks ago and where we are today. So when we mapped out the actual schedules, when we were moving to a five-day, as directed by the board, we found that in order to accommodate different arrival and dismissal times, which we haven't gotten into the specific school times, as we said earlier, that will come, once the high school is also finalized, we found we have to build in so much more time for things like staggering arrivals of buses versus vehicular traffic for other transitions, that even in a full school day, we would probably have about five and a half hours to six hours of students available to do work. And because you have to serve lunch and have recess, if you have a full school day by state law, that would take away an hour, and it brings us down to four and a half to five hours. So even in the four-day, full-day model, it's about the same amount of time as it is now. So I understand that, you know, the feeling that there'd be more hours of instructional time, but that's just not realistic, given all the different considerations that have to be in place, but I understand that. There were several questions, oh, let me hit a couple of quick ones that were sort of one-offs. Aftercare is available, the sign-ups have already started, we've been working with our aftercare provider the entire time. The information about how to access that for when your child is in-person is available through the community briefings that go out each Thursday, so you're definitely welcome to go there. They understand that we have to assign cohorts, and until we know which cohort we're in, we don't know which days and all that, so people can register now to get in the queue, and then they'll work with you on that. Let me just scroll up here and get some of the other ones that were sort of on their own. There were several questions about, would we change the amount of time in-person based on people choosing distance? That's actually, it's very complex. And so if, let's, I'm just making up numbers, if 25% of our families decide that, based on what they know now, they choose distance learning, and then we change the in-person model, some of those 25% are going to want to change, too. So if we said, now that these 25% of families are no longer coming to school, we can go to school with all kids for six hours a day, some of those people who chose distance learning would now want to change their decision. So we have to be very careful that we take our time, that we implement one model, assess it, and then make a plan for future adjustments so that all families have the ability to make changes. We will not make changes for one section of one class because of the numbers there. What we might do is reassign staff to different buildings, or change homeroom constitutions, that sort of thing, if that happens. So as I know everybody appreciates, there are so many moving parts. We need to know, generally speaking, how many kids are in each model, because that will dictate the answers to many of the questions people are asking for. We also, you know, it didn't really come up much in the conversation tonight, but the other big variable is our staff. So we have somewhere between 30 and 40 staff members who are eligible, based on CDC guidelines, to ask for reasonable accommodations to their working environment. Some of those accommodations are dependent on the other decisions we make, and how many students are present, and what the classrooms look like. And so we need to bring all that stuff together and start working through that. That also gets at things like substitutes. So I appreciate the person who commented on the Family First Coronavirus Act and its limitations. I think, and we all need to be sympathetic of everybody else's situation, right? It's important for all of us to think about that. The vast majority of our teaching staff and our administrators are also parents who have their own kids at home, who also are going to be going to school under some kind of a hybrid model. And so they have concerns about childcare, they have, and they need to come to work every single day for their full seven-hour contractual day. So we're working through a lot of moving pieces to make all that work and to accommodate those requests. We will probably be advertising for numerous teaching and other support positions in the next 10 days, as people's leave requests are processed and granted, for up to 12 weeks under the Family First Coronavirus Act. None of us knows what happens after December 31st when that expires, that's a concern. Mr. Franco earlier mentioned the importance of communicating with state officials for the Family First Coronavirus Act, that would be a place to communicate with congressional representation as well, because we don't really know what will happen at the end of that time period. So I know I'm just kind of going, I'm just trying to get through as many of them as I can tonight, and then we'll address the rest tomorrow on the FAQs. What I Need Time Win is a concept that responds to many concerns we heard in the spring, and even going into the summer of, what are we going to do about learning loss that took place? So the idea behind What I Need Time is that a teacher, especially at the elementary school, where they have a homeroom and they see the kids most of the day, has to have some flexibility to say, "This group of students needs more math today." has to have some flexibility to say, this group of students needs more math today. And so win might mean that we extend math that day. Or it might mean that we do an enrichment experience. Or it might mean that we partner with the librarian to do this other thing. So what exactly it means depends on the, the students and their staff. That's one of the things that our, our summer or August teachers will be working on, fleshing out options for all of that. So it could mean lots of different things depending on the environment. One of the, one of the comments that was made, which was kind of fearful, unfortunately is accurate, that the school district experience in person is not going to feel like it normally does. Our teachers are phenomenal and they're going to make it as warm and fuzzy and caring and compassionate as they possibly can. But they have to keep six feet away from the kids and they have to keep the kids six feet away from each other. There are limits on sharing, you know. Our level of planning is at the point where one of the conversations we had earlier today was normally we put supplies in the middle of a table. And now we have to figure out how to make sure we have enough supplies for every student at their own seat for things like scissors and glue sticks and at home, in their home office or workspace. So that's the level of difference. You know, I think we all need to start, teachers, administrators, parents. School is not going to look like school in person, at least when we open this school year. And we all hope we're going to move across the continuum as fast as we can. But we have to prepare ourselves and our kids. You know, the other concern I have is, I don't know about everybody else on this call, but I haven't personally worn a face covering for four and a half hours in a row. We are requiring our kids and our staff to do that. That's a pretty big ask. And we have to start, we have to think about what does that look like and how do we get ourselves ready for that? You know, I went to a place earlier this week, I've actually been fairly slow in going to in-person places, but I went to one that had all kinds of great protocols and they asked to take a picture for like their Facebook page or something. And it wasn't until after the picture that I realized they couldn't tell that I was smiling for the picture. That's a really small little example, but our students and our staff are not going to see each other making, smiling and, and the kind of facial expressions and warmth. That's a huge problem. And one that is actually mitigated by the distance learning synchronous experience. And so one of the challenges that we're offering to our staff who are working in August on preparing the rest of the staff to return in September is we almost, instead of trying to recreate what used to be the in-person experience, we have to think better about making the, the technology-based experience personal and warm and caring the way in-person school was a year ago. And even when kids are in person, there will be times where maybe they need to put in headphones and be on a camera so that they can see the faces of their, of their classmates who are at home where they don't have to have a face mask on. You know, there's a lot that goes into these considerations. And as many of you have said, the people working on it care very deeply about their jobs. They also care very deeply about their own families. And they're worried about what happens if there's, you know, an exposure in school. How do I, how do I manage that for my own family? We have lots of staff members who live in the households of other people with high risk. We have lots of students in that situation as well. And, you know, we get all those emails and all those concerns. We're trying to make sure that we address them as best we can. As far as PPE for our staff, you know, there were a couple of comments about that. At this time, we do not intend to have Plexiglas all over the place and kids working in tiny cubes like you've seen on TV from some other places. The, the distancing that we'll be able to accommodate will allow us to not have to go too far. But there will be places where those things are in place because of accommodations or because of certain needs. You know, we, we are testing right now through our summer special education assessment process, places where we need to have people wear both cloth face coverings and a face shield. We've got guidance on that. Behind Plexiglas, because when you're doing, for example, a speech therapy assessment, you have to take off the mask because that's just the way the assessment is done. So all of those things are, are works in progress. We all wish that we had all the answers. We have a lot of answers already in place. We have a lot more answers to them than we had two weeks ago and then before, a month before that. I, I think if you come to the information sessions tomorrow, you also, I hope get answers to additional questions and we'll make sure we get as much as possible in place for the frequently asked questions as well. And I know I didn't answer everything, but I, I tried to answer as much as I could, Mr. Bowman, and, and happy to, I, I wrote them all down and we'll take them back to our teams as well. Mrs. Zahn might have a question for me though.
Yes, thank you. I want to follow up on a parent's question with regard to the REACH programs. And I presume the E2, E2 programs in middle school, how will those be provided?
So exactly how they will be provided, I can't answer yet, because every specialized program is dependent on the people who teach it and whether or not there are any changes to staffing assignments. So as I said earlier, there are people who may go on leave of absence or have accommodations where we might have to fill their positions and that might happen from internal. So I don't want to overstay, but yes, it is our intention that we would still be offering things like our REACH program. It might be through, you know, as you saw in the schedules that Mr. Kimick shared, we move specials and world language to the at-home time, even when you're in the in-person hybrid, partially because those programs are extremely difficult to safely do in person. They are also the places where at the middle school, for example, the cohorts mix and it'll allow us to have a little bit more control. So it might be possible that REACH falls into that timeframe, for example.
Mrs. Taylor?
We don't have details yet, Dr. Mingle, but could you speak to some of the parents' concerns about how the district will support them in supporting their children at home?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Taylor. So one of the sort of tasks of the people who are being approved tonight for summer work is to develop parent support modules of some kind. As we learned, there are some of the programs that are in place. Some of them we're still vetting to decide, but they're, they're also starting to pop up with support. So like, for example, in our math textbook series, our math program, they're publishing support guides for parents because everybody knows all around the country. And in most parts of the country, they have now decided to go full virtual to open the school year. So some of the companies that we work with are actually producing those things for us. But our teams will produce parent support as well. And to that, to the question about, I hear loud and clear the concern of multiple kids in the house from a technology standpoint, but also from a management standpoint. Tomorrow, the, the Genesis Parent Portal signup form has several areas. It asks to decide a hybrid. It asks, or a distance learning. It asks whether or not you want to waive your transportation. It also directs you on how to do a technology speed test so that you can determine whether your home has the level of technology that we believe it will need to support multiple devices. Once we have that data, we can then work on helping families find solutions to those problems. So that's something else that's kind of behind the scenes and we're trying to get that data through our process tomorrow. The, you know, the majority of our family members have said all throughout the spring that they would like there to be more synchronous. But an important minority of parents have said, I can't possibly sustain synchronous learning with multiple kids or even with one kid. And so what we're working on, our solutions for what distance will look like is it has to be recordable, whatever we do, so that parents who are not available or, you know, there's going to be a lot of parents having their kids either with a grandparent or a neighbor or in a childcare center where they don't have access to the learning at that time. They need to have an asynchronous access without expecting teachers to do something that is physically impossible, which is literally managed both at exactly the same time. So those are all the details that we're trying to work out for using technology and finding supports for parents. I went off from your question, Mrs. Taylor, to some other topics, but.
No, that, that was fine. I just wanted you to, to, to address that it is a concern.
It is a concern and it's something that we're, that we're working on, yep.
I think, Mr. Breezy?
Go ahead. Just, I, just to reinforce something that I heard from the public comments, I think all of it was good. But one that really stood out to me, I think it was Mr. Klein had mentioned Summer Fund in the, the, the learning there was maybe a, a next iteration from what it was when we had to, you know, enact essentially over a weekend back in March. So it, just a suggestion to, if there was a way to maybe survey, and maybe that's not the right word, the Summer Fund participants in the spirit of knocking it out of the park, tying it to the last meeting and, you know, continuous improvement. I think that would help the distance learning element of hybrid 1.0 as well as 2.0. Once we get there, I'm confident we'll get there and hopefully give some good feedback back to administration. So just a suggestion, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Breezy. And I, I had a conversation last week with the principal of Summer Fund, Mrs. Luteri, about exactly that point. We do a parent survey at the end of each experience and use helping, that's some starting data from people who had a different kind of online experience. We also will have another survey this month where we can ask some additional questions of all parents. You know, one of the things that we try to do is, you know, it's very difficult to operate in essentially emergency response at all times, which we've all been doing in our personal and professional lives since March. And so we're trying to triage, what are the highest value activities for us to work on? One of the things we brought to the board, which responds, I think, to many of the parent concerns, was a proposal that we needed, we needed more help with that. That we don't have a, you know, there are districts around us, especially large K-12 districts, where they have, in addition to the people we have, another layer of administration that might have six or eight or 10 curriculum supervisors who do the kinds of things people are asking for. We don't have that layer. So rather than suggest we add more administration and take all the time it takes to make that happen, we've recommended, and it's on the agenda for approval, a proposal that invests in our staff and invites staff who have the time, the energy and the expertise to come back to work essentially immediately and work the month of August, preparing for everybody else to be able to return. So we definitely hear the concerns. They're not, they're not falling on deaf ears, but things take time for us to work on.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It seems that this concludes item number 11. Moving on to number 12. Is there anybody on the board that wants to pull out an agenda item for either a separate vote or for a discussion? Please just speak up. I see nobody making a motion. Where's that? Mrs. Stone, could you please?
Yes, thank you. Motion to approve items for consideration. I, section 12, items A 1 through 3, B 1 through 3, C 1 through 8, D 1 and 2.
Second, Bowman.
Mr. Bellish?
Yes.
Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Breezy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Thank you very much. Unfinished business, seeing a new business, public engagement. This was added to the agenda based on a lot of discussions that we had in the past weeks on how to interact better with our community, gathering feedback, also providing some answers to our community in some sessions between the board, administration and the public. I want to bring that up as a discussion item and ask board members to start up the discussion. Mrs. Stone, please.
Okay, I'll start it. As I stated during the early part of our last meeting, which predated the, you know, was before the seven o'clock timeframe when we were in our board retreat. The, I really support the board having a board goal of looking at public engagement over the course of, you know, this next year, make that a board goal. Specifically looking at how and when it works for us to offer perhaps town hall meeting type of a style of engagement with the public. That seems to be something that's been called for and I would certainly like to explore that. But I wonder if that isn't something that for the board, if, if we wouldn't all benefit from this conversation being assigned to a committee for the purpose of bringing back a full set of proposals that the board can then consider, you know, item by item. It's just a thought.
That is an interesting idea. Mr. Franco, please go ahead.
Yeah, another idea that might, might, as you know, the regular board meetings attendance has been, with the exception of one or two people who know they, who know, know who they are, the attendance has been abysmal from the public. And perhaps if we changed a bit of the public commentary format in the meetings to allow for some response in the meeting itself, rather than just taking the questions and/or comments that are raised and allow the public to ask questions, which are then, if possible, answered on the spot. I think might, might be encouraging for people to actually come to the meetings, speak their mind on the agenda items and actually get responses to, to questions that they might have. But I don't know if that would require a change in the rules of our meetings. But that's something that perhaps is an option.
Mrs. Taylor and then Mrs. Stone, please.
Yeah, so I think that that makes sense, Mark. I think what we're, we were talking about though was dialogue, right? Because I think they ask questions and Dr. Mingle will try to answer them. Or, or maybe the board president will try to answer them. But what we want, like what we were talking about, and I think maybe the public wants is more engagement. So like there's back and forth and explanation, which is a different kind of, of thing that we're asking. And I don't know, someone can tell us, maybe Chris, if that's possible, the town, the town hall format or a focus group format would give us more freedom or more flexibility to have that open dialogue.
Sure, first, Mrs. Stone, and then I'll comment a little bit on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a desirable thing to, to have. It's clearly the public wants, and, and why wouldn't they really? It's a little awkward. I used to sit in the audience also and ask questions and they just kind of land in dead air. But I'm not sure that during the board meeting itself, I'm, I'm not sure how that works. And this is why I kind of favor a committee really sitting down and puzzling through this. Because who is it that responds? As an elected official, I presume that a member of the public, when they're asking the board a question, kind of wants to know what I think. I'm not the president. On the spot, is the president of the board really in a position to answer on behalf of all board members? Certainly, Dr. Mingle can and generally does answer questions that go directly to the administration. But without an ability to anticipate any questions because of a narrow focused topic and without, I mean, I'm just not sure how that works. If we have a town hall and we set it up as it's a particular topic, right? We're going to talk about distance learning, for instance, people's feedback. You know, and, and a narrow topic that might actually foster greater engagement because it, it focuses people in. And we can set parameters at that time about, you know, board, individual board members can speak, but without it being a representation of the board, but they're acting and speaking on their own behalf. I'm not sure how that fits in to the actual board, the meetings that we have here. And it's because I have some struggle with these, you know, I want to get to a place where, where we're all engaging the public that I kind of think a committee working through this, at least initially, would be helpful.
Thank you. Yes, so my thoughts are also around that, who will speak up during these times? While it is my privilege as the president to speak on behalf of the board, I will definitely not provide answers on behalf of the board that I cannot provide. I can provide a consensus of the board, of us, all of us nine. I think there is a more appropriate forum where we have separate meetings, where we might get questions sent before and individual board members are then answering these questions and discussing about these questions. We are all members of certain committees. Maybe we can ask, answer questions from, that adhere to these committees that fit into a committee and then assign them out to individual members of the board to explain why certain things are done, to have a dialogue with the public. But that would require more preparation by sending in the questions and would be not as spontaneous from a conversation between the public and the board. As for the forum, I think we should have separate meetings for that. Not sure about how many per year are appropriate under normal circumstances. At some time, COVID will hopefully pass. We're moving back to normal circumstances where I still hope that we can have better communication with the public, more engagement with the public. And then maybe we want to have one in the spring, one in the fall after school reopening, one the spring after the session, interim session, where we discuss with the public what's, what problems are there? What recommendation? What feedback? Where should the board be aware of certain things? We are always trying to talk to people to get pulse, to feel what's going on in the school district. But having an interaction with our community could definitely help us to understand more what's happening and where there are some problems of which we are not aware, or where there are some things working out very well that we also want to look into as an example. Mr. Franco?
Sorry, yeah, just making sure I get the mute off. So the board, the board is not a monolith, right? I mean, we are nine individuals on a board. We all have different opinions on things. Of course, we can only act. Of course, we can only act through voting as a board. But through, I think the format you're talking about requires that the board have a position on any of these particular questions. Now, my individual position may differ from the board as a whole. And perhaps people want to hear the individual thoughts of the board members. And I think that's fair. And so doing it at the board meeting on, on agenda items or non-agenda items, I think it's fair for people to come to a board meeting and ask questions that things of a factual nature should be answered by the appropriate party, whether that be Dr. Mingle or, or Mr. Bellman, uh, as the case may be. But if they are opinion topics and people want to hear what we have to think on certain subjects, they should be able to ask those questions. And we should be free to answer how we feel and how we view those issues. And when it comes to vote, then we have a vote. We don't always agree. Our votes are not always nine, zero, right? So, you know, we should, uh, I think that that's a fair way of doing it. Uh, and doing it at the board meeting, we're already there. It's, we don't have to create another meeting. Um, perhaps we can do it early in the agenda so that it's, you know, that looks, so people can come, make their comments, ask their questions, and, you know, potentially not have to sit through what I'll call some of the mundane stuff if they just want to get to, to, to talking about some issues. I don't think it's a huge issue. I mean, maybe we should ask, um, Matt Jacoby from a legal standpoint, what the, what the process should or could look like. But I think that would be a fair way of doing it.
Mrs. Stone.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I agree with Mark. Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Franco. Um, I've always taken the position that I should be prepared to justify and explain my votes. I try to do that when I think that the votes are going to be controversial or not widely accepted, or they're not mundane. I do try to do that, but that's not true for every board member. And it varies how comfortable people are going to be being asked on the spot to speak on, as to their position. I'm, I, I really think that this requires a lot of thought. I do think Matt Jacoby's advice would be useful. Um, I'd love to brainstorm this. I'm just not sure that, uh, I, I, I think that, again, I'm going to say, I don't know, I've said it already twice, that handing this off to a committee for more substantive conversation and brainstorming, and then coming back to the board with thoughts is probably valuable.
I like the idea of a committee, yes, definitely, um, to work together with Matt Jacoby. I want to hear a little bit more from board members if they think committee would be appropriate to direct that to, so that we can at some time get the results. Mrs. Chu, could you please?
Yeah, I agree that it should go to the committee, but I think what the public currently is asking, like the questions around this topic of hybrid and opening, and I think those are probably more the relevant questions right now, and those are probably more directed at administration and trying to have a, I guess, a dialogue with the board available in administration. And so that, but I do agree that it should be brought to committee. But I, I do want to say that, um, that these requests have not fallen on deaf ears. Like we added the August 17th meeting for Q and A on, um, on the hybrid model. And the curriculum committee is, has been, has met and are thinking through these topics as well. And, uh, curriculum committee has been also added another meeting. And, um, whatever, if we do move this to a board, I would also request something, some, whether it's town hall style or something, uh, near the end of September to, to gauge with, engage with the public to see how distance learning is going. So those are, those are my requests.
I'm tempted to make a motion to form this committee. The only question that I have is, um, who should be on the committee? I would probably ask for volunteers for that. I'm not sure if we need the hats of the other committees for that. I think volunteers are better suited. Ms. DiMaggio, I saw your hand.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Bellman. Um, I'd like to, I agree with Mr. Franco. Um, I, I would like to know a little bit more from a legal standpoint and ethic, an ethical standpoint. We get our ethics training, um, individually, what that looks like for each of us. Um, I'd also like to hear from our superhero, Dr. Mingle, what he thinks about that and us getting individual questions as board members are responding and defending, justifying, explaining a vote of yes or no abstain.
Dr. Mingle, do you want to answer that? Or should we refer to our, um, legal counsel?
I'm going to share some thoughts, but I think Mr. Brzee might have comments first.
Mr. Brzee.
Yeah, sir, thank you. So I, I guess I would want to, so I, topic is awesome, right? Completely agree with the topic, without a doubt. The challenge I have in my, in my brain, the block I have is, we put this out to a committee. The committee operates out of public view because it's not a quorum. The intent is the opposite of that. So we're, we're by design, if I'm understanding it right, creating people to go into seclusion to come up with a plan to talk to the public better. That should be a public discussion. All those options should be in the public. And I might have, I see Mrs. Zahn's hand up. So, so I might have, I, I might have misunderstood the intent of the committee, but all of the rest of our operating committees are all non-quorum committees for reasons, and, and they do not operate in, in with the public. So that's the piece that I, um, very respectfully, uh, struggle with.
Mrs. Stone, please.
Yeah, I mean, I get that. But our, our committees, which don't operate with a quorum, do report back. We have a committee report process. Um, they also report, you know, minutes as well as agendas in advance among the whole body. The only purpose for the committees, any of our committees, is not to form policy or make decisions. It's to collate information, to put together options, and to present that back to the whole board. So nothing gets decided at a, at a committee that, at any of our committees, right? Um, that would be inappropriate. But I do think there's a benefit in having, um, members of the board who are aware that this is something we want to talk about, putting together some thoughts, which then get discussed in public. Um, there's no, I have no interest in avoiding transparency at all. Um, but I do think that, you know, the, the nine of us here kind of batting around ideas is, is more fruitful. If the ideas we're batting around is something that somebody's, that, you know, actually thought about and put down on a list and said, you know, here are things, everyone's always in a position to come up with a different idea here at the full board than what came up at the committee, and that frequently happens. Um, so it's, it's a mechanism for organization. It's not intended to substitute for board action or deliberation.
Mrs. Taylor, could you please, then I will comment on that as well.
Yeah, I wanted to just say, like, for me, you know, as the chair of the curriculum committee, I had proposed like some sort of focus group or town hall so I could hear what parents were thinking about spring and, you know, summer funds, so we could move towards a, a solution with some ideas for what the fall could look like. And, you know, like Suzie said, we have been listening to folks' feedback and trying to consider it as we are making plans for the fall. And I think another option for people is to, I know someone commented, um, about sending us emails, and I do try to respond and say like, thank you for sending the email. But you see here in this discussion that we have some constraints around like what we are able to offer you in terms of, um, in terms of answers. So, um, I want, want you all to know that. But I think I would say for me, like, you might not get any answers, but I do think that our emails are there so that people can contact us. And that's another way for folks to communicate with us and have their voices at least heard.
I think committee has a benefit because we can have legal counsel there, um, advise us on how this should look. That's why I think a committee makes a lot of sense instead of a big discussion together with counsel, um, at an open meeting. Mr. Bishi.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman. I would just say, uh, time is of the essence might seem dramatic, but boy, we've had two board meetings with over 200 people. And I, now's the time, if ever there was a time, right? Now's the time to do it. So it sounds like a committee is a good idea, but if the turnaround time could be quick, I bet you the public would still be interested, more so over the next couple of meetings or next couple of weeks and possibly months would be when the public's most interested. And I think our township and our school system would benefit the most if we could really turn it around quickly.
Yeah, I fully agree with that, Mr. Bishi.
There I have a, a question to, um, Dr. Mingle. Is it possible, um, from a logistics point of view to form the committee? I would ask for volunteers tonight. I would, um, put out the names tomorrow so that these individuals would meet within the next two weeks with Mr. Jacoby and propose something for the next board meeting in two weeks. It is definitely a tight timeline, but it might be possible.
If I can share some of those, those comments. As you, I love what you're talking about would require the board to change its bylaws. And so I think you definitely need legal guidance, and you, you may need consultation with New Jersey School Boards Association or Strauss ESMA because some of, you know, I, I totally get it, and we're in a, a special circumstance, and so there's a desire to do something about that. You know, we added two public meetings that were not on the calendar as part of that response. I, I just want to be careful that we don't rush and make a pretty big error. You know, the reason we have norms for board communication and bylaws and policy and all that stuff is so that when there's a situation like this, we have somewhere to fall back on. And I just want to remind you that the curriculum committee's full name is Curriculum Communications and Technology. It is in their charter to handle issues of communication of the board. Whether you want that to be the committee that handles it, because I'm sure the people on that committee are, you know, may not necessarily be the people who are passionate about doing this background work. But the benefit of a committee is, because I was thinking about this in terms of the board goal after the last meeting, there's a lot of work that can be done to find out from school boards, you know, what are the school districts that have really good models for this? Let's go talk to board members in those communities. Let's go to some workshops about it. Let's research other districts. Let's look at our bylaws or other samples. All of that, to answer your, the final question, I don't think we could responsibly do that. You certainly won't get the level of administrative support that you want because all of our work is on reopening right now. So there might need to be like some version that happens in the short term, but then there's a longer term investigation for what that really looks like. But I, I, we normally supply all of the research and process development for all of the committees. There's no way I can ask that of the senior leadership team.
Understood, yes. Makes some sense. Mr. Breezy, please go ahead.
Just, uh, thank you, Mr. One. Just, um, so I, I would, I would agree with Dr. Mingle, the, uh, we, we should consult with, uh, Matt G. on this. One, one thought that came to my mind, um, that, that I would certainly be a fan of, and I'm not sure it can be done quickly, but one of the, I'd speak personally, one of the challenges I've always had with the, being on the board is you, you do this for kids, yet you never actually see kids in the schools. You get invited to go to reading days, and I do it every year, and it's completely awesome. I'm very thankful for that. So if, along the lines of communications, to me, uh, if we're going to, I'm going to use my phrase again, I can't help it. If we're going to knock it out of the park, we should involve the students. We have students that, that, that are just talented in so many ways. Have them interview board members once a month, post it on YouTube, whatever it is. They ask the questions, involve them. They, they do news shows every day, day in and day out, more than, more than I've ever been on camera myself. Um, I, I, I think that's where we as a district really need to shine. We need, yeah, parents are important. They're critical. But our students are the ones that we're here for. So any solution that involves our students and helps them learn in the process, I think would be a, you know, a grand slam personally. That's not against the committee. I'm just, it might be in addition to, but I, I think that's to me a winning combination. Thank you.
Mrs. Stone.
1,000% agree with Mr. Brzee. Agreed, totally.
And having heard that from, Mrs. Chu, please, go ahead.
I, I want to reiterate something Ms. Taylor said, though, that, um, wh- while we are figuring this out, in the meantime, that, that I, I personally do look at every email that is sent to me. And I think what is seen here in these, in, in the, um, public sessions here are just the tip of the iceberg of the stuff we're doing behind the scenes. And so we do, I, I have discussed several of these emails with other committee members, with Dr. Mingle. And so, um, i- if you're not feeling heard, I'm sorry, but like we, we, I, I just want to say that if you are sending emails, that they are being looked at and not ignored. Um, and so if, if it takes a while for us to figure out how to do more public commentary and maybe try to get some town hall or something arranged for later, then, um, in the meantime, like, I would encourage you to keep emailing and, um, yeah, while, while we work this out. And, yeah, that's.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chu. Any further comment? Seeing now, moving on to business item 15, public commentary. Once again, the rules are three minutes per contributor. And please state your name and address and use the raise your hand feature. From Zoom, you can find that at the bottom when clicking on participants. There is at the bottom, raise the hand. Moving on to Mr. Kevin Kilpatrick, please go ahead.
Hi, yes, this is actually his wife, Kimberly. I'm at 52 Ferguson Road, Warren, and my camera's not working on my. So my question is this, um, to the board. The Board of Education, the teachers, the state is all asking parents to bend over backwards to make this work in, in the presence of a pandemic. What about the option of having teachers work on weekends in the evening to help make asynchronous and synchronous learning possible for those parents who are essential workers, who have to work outside of the home during normal business hours where their children are in childcare with grandparents or a daycare service? Provide them both opportunities to educate their children in times when they are at home. This will also help out the teachers who don't feel it's comfortable to go to work, have issues with that, have higher health needs, but offer it not just Monday through Friday, um, business as usual, because that's going to be very hard for parents to meet that who don't have the option to work from home or who do work from home, but have to be at work all day to provide for their children. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Kilpatrick. Moving on to Shifali Tijani.
Hi, Shifali Tijani, one Aspen Court. Um, wondering about the, you know, going to the half day. I know Dr. Mingle stated it was four and a half hours of in-school learning, but still confused about that because from the chart that was presented earlier, um, prior to the dismissal period, it showed only 3.6 hours of class time. So if you could please elaborate further on where exactly this four and a half hours of in-school learning is coming from? And also, we're, and I understand that going to this half day, you know, you mentioned logistics, but were parents taken into account and, and what we had asked for when going to this half day? Because I'd be curious to know how many parents would prefer the original two full days as opposed to two half days and an alternating Wednesday? When we asked the board to come back with a 50% in-school schedule, I don't think this is exactly what the parents had in mind, and I'm not sure most parents are, are happy with this. So I don't know if this is already set in stone or whether there is some discussion about what the parents had asked for. But, you know, if it's not set in stone, I'd like the board to think about this a little more. And my final statement is, when will we find out which cohort our child is in, A or B? Because we need time to plan care for remote days, aftercare, whatever it is. And sending that out a couple of weeks before school starts doesn't really help. So the sooner that it can be, um, released, the better it would be for, for all parents involved. So the sooner that it can be released, the better it would be for all parents involved. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Tijani. Moving on to Rosa Kraus.
Rosa Kraus, to Holly Drive. Mr. Breezy, congratulations. I absolutely love the idea of inviting the kids, interviewing the board members. I love that idea. If I am here to criticize most of the time, I'm here to say I love that idea. And I think it would be great to hear from the kids after all. All, there are, there are reason for being here. So love that idea. Mr. Franco, absolutely love the idea of a town hall. It's, you don't, just by putting it out there and listening to us, it would be great. We're not, even if you don't have the answers, but just being able to engage with us, it would be, it would be highly appreciated instead of just being talked, us talking to you with no feedback. And with that said, my husband works for a company, a Fortune 100 company. Every three weeks, they have a virtual town hall with hundreds of and thousands of employees. And they listen to them. They don't have all the answers, but they just listen. And I think that would be great if we would have that same, so we would feel like we're just talking. There's no, no feedback. It's okay to say it's my opinion, but it's not what is right for the, of, of what I'm going to vote for. But again, I think a town hall would be a great, great plan. That's all.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Kraus. Moving on to Mrs. Singleton.
Rachel Singleton, 22, deal with Trail West. I also think that Mr. Breezy's idea to interview the board members is a great idea. Mr. Bishi, there were 302 participants at the height of this meeting. So some hundred more than you saw. Dr. Mingle mentioned bringing staff back early if they were, you know, able to. Have you considered asking the parent community for their help with this too? And this evening, we heard from a couple of this different specialists, Mr. Pinkus and Mr. Klein. That was health and IT there. And I'm sure, you know, like we pull out for the strategic planning, different parents come in and offer their help and support with that plan. It could possibly be pulled out even at short notice to ask other parents to join in. Also, I wanted to know, are we hiring more counselors to help the kids and the staff with what's going on both in school, because it's going to look so different, and then also virtually again? And how are we going to look to reduce the stress levels on kids? I happen to watch the Screen Ages video that the PTO paid for back in March and the UC Irvine study. And that said, that showed that when parents helped their children, the stress levels of the child went up enormously. So what are we going to do to help reduce the stress levels for the children? And then also on the staff members too, because as you say, a lot of them have children at home too. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Singleton. Moving on to Magna Agavara.
Thanks, Krishan. Yeah, so I just had, I really absolutely liked the idea of the two-day plan, half-day plan, because I think if there is a group transmission incident, it is going to happen either in the bathrooms or over lunch. And it is absolutely, I think it is, it just has to be the new normal we are in, till we have a vaccine. So I, I completely, I really like that plan. In terms of just the platform, and I, there has been a significant amount of concern. And I was actually quite shocked and appalled at the complete lack of digital readiness that was, you know, seen over the spring sessions. So I would suggest that get your platform into the hands of the kids for a user acceptance testing in the next 10, 15 days. Let them have a go at it. Let them come back to you with a feedback. Let them tell you what works for them, what doesn't work for them. And you continue to iterate and fix it. Because if it is anywhere near what happened in spring, it is just not acceptable. We cannot be in this day and age at that level of readiness for digital, just not possible. And the other thing I absolutely love is the community, the parents' community. There is tremendous amount of talent. I am a digital transformation partner with a Fortune 100 company. The parents are willing to come in. We can come in, we can help you. Just tell us how you want us to engage, how we can help you make this journey. Because like I said, it's, it has to, we have to come to a solution as a community. There is, there is no, you know, everybody is in it together. If we don't come together now, there is just no point. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Mr. Joya. Adam, you're up.
Thanks, Chris. Just a couple of things real quick. Thanks for staying on the call for so late, first of all. Just two quick questions. Looking for a number, how frequently are we going to review the stats to determine if we need to dial it up, bring in the kids in more frequently or dial it back? The open-ended answers don't really work for us. You know, is it going to be once a week, once a month? Secondly, are there going to be any kind of requirements before the teachers and children return to school to determine if these children are sick before they return? A lot of people are asymptomatic. You know, I could see already someone having the COVID before, even going back to school. They go to school and then all of a sudden, we've got a school closure. And then just to get back to the meeting, the committee meeting you guys were discussing, you know, we're hearing only one side of the story. So example, for me, it's very hard to believe that we don't have the space in the school to spread children out. So if there was a conversation, someone could say, hey, listen, we had the school floor plans. Here's your square footage of the entire footprint. Here's how many students we have. Here's how many students aren't coming. It sounds like some of the data is being collected now that maybe should have been collected a month or two ago. Who's coming back? Who's not? What's the total square footage of each school? How many kids? You know, I look at the all-purpose room, the gymnasium, and a couple of other big rooms. And for me, it's just hard to believe, but if someone puts numbers in front, conversation, you're not committing to anything. You're informing us. That helps us a lot. It helps us understand. So I, if you guys could do that, I think it'd be real helpful for everybody. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Snow, please go ahead.
Hi, Cindy.
It's very difficult for me to understand. Are you able to move to somewhere where you have better coverage?
I'm just back because I felt that I wasn't answered properly the first time by Dr. Mingle. Again, I just have the same question. Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes, you're cutting a little bit in and out. Let's try it.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, now we are. I was able to hear you. Maybe you can turn off the video. That sometimes helps to reduce bandwidth.
Okay, sorry.
I think it is understandable. Please go ahead.
So I, okay, I'm back because like I said, you know, my, okay, okay. So I'm going to, yes, so I just have the same question again, because I feel like Dr. didn't answer me properly the first time. And my quotation on the proposal, he very clearly laid out the, and how he got to the 40%. Now, the last meeting, the board members went on 50%. And he's very, and Dr. Mingle, I've addressed you personally. You're very unclear now how you arrived at a 50%. And as I stated before, the numbers, the hours do not match up. So frankly, it's quite insulting to think that, you know, you basically can do a bait switch on us and maybe hoping we wouldn't realize it or figure it out. But again, the math in terms of the hours is what it is. And so if you can just clarify one more time for me in perhaps a clearer way, how you come up with the 50% versus your original 40%, I would very much appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Snow. We are at the end of the first 15-minute block, and there's only two hands raised of people that already spoke. Is there a motion by the board?
Yeah, motion to let him speak.
Second. The, we now have three people. Can we include those three?
I'm sorry, I, I made a mistake. I didn't want me to go again.
So we still have two.
We just asked the, Mrs. Agavara, I don't think you said your address when you spoke.
Sorry, I, we are at 51 Mountain Avenue.
Thank you so much.
So the motion is to have the two people speak that are still raising their hand. That was from, whose motion?
Mine.
Mr. Franco seconded by Mrs. Zahn. Mr. Bellish.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi. Mr. Breezy. Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
Mr. Bellman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Leona. Moving on to Mrs. Kilpatrick.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, yes, I forgot to ask earlier. My question is with regard to the preschool, because Mr. Reza spoke earlier, but he did not elaborate. My question about the preschool is, he said it was going to open on a five-day schedule, but it was a modified schedule. We have to decide in a couple of days as a parent group if that schedule meets our needs. I wanted to know, first off, what the modified schedule entails. Secondly, if it entails busing. Thirdly, for the preschool children with the new mask mandate, how is that going to work with the preschool-aged children? And my apologies for not asking that before.
Great, thank you. Last but not least, Mr. or Mrs. Pucci.
Hi, I just want to follow up on Adam Goya's remark, sorry, 33 Washington Valley Road. Because I know this is information that's circulating based on the numbers of the district has provided the states. We're currently running at 55% capacity on each, on average per school, some more than others. And basically, right now, the schools, based on the A and B model, will be running at 20 to 25 capacity each school. If we have 10% of children that are not attending, I don't think, if there was more transparency, I think people would be willing to understand, because we don't have the town hall engagement conversation. We could never really do it. The numbers are out there. When you find them, you look per school, and it doesn't even make sense, because we have the classroom space based on the numbers you have provided the state as a whole. So I think there is a need for that two-way dialogue, for questions to be directly answered. And I think it will be beneficial for all of us to have transparency and the spirit of communication. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, moving on, Dr. Mingle, are you able to address some of these questions, please? Do you need some time? Do you need?
No, it's okay. There are only a few. So the, the question about when we'll know when your cohort is, we had a conversation about this last week. We want to be careful not to commit to something we can't deliver on. So I'm going to say for right now that our goal is the week of August 17th, which gives us two weeks. It gives us one week to figure out who's coming back, and then one week to figure out the cohorts. If we can do it sooner, we did talk about, we might be able to communicate cohort Monday, Tuesday versus Thursday, Friday, before we can communicate about what homeroom you're in or anything else, so at least for childcare purposes. And, you know, finding people who are in the same cohort and figuring out how that's all going to work. I understand the importance. The high school meeting tonight is very important for that as well, because we need to know how they're assigning their students to cohorts so that we can try to match up families as much as we possibly can. So we'll start working on that as soon as we know which kids are in hybrid and which kids are at home, which will be later this week. And actually, that reminds me of something I meant to mention earlier. There was a comment about the fact that our meeting is the same as the high school, reflecting a lack of consideration on the side of this board. I just want to point out that this is our board's normal meeting night. And while it is, it is not Watchon Hills' normal meeting night, it's a special meeting night for them. I just want to take some of that pressure off of this board. We were using our regular meeting night. I understand it's a difficulty to have at the same time. The comments about asking for help are well-taken, and there have been four to, four or five different people who have reached out since the last meeting with very specific expertise that I've connected to subcommittee chairs. If there's anybody who, you know, we heard a couple of people tonight, we obviously took down their information. If there are others that think they have a certain expertise that might help us, you can send that directly to me or covid-19@warrentboe, and we'll get that connected to the right people. Sometimes it works out that we can get that help in, you know, that conversation. For example, a situation like that may have led to our solution for getting PPE into the school. So don't, you know, certainly let us know. We'll follow up where we can. Sometimes it doesn't work out based on the nature of the situation. As far as hiring more people, I think, you know, one of the things we didn't talk about because of how big everything is, is that the board had to adopt a revised budget tonight that reflected a reduction of state aid to school districts. So right now, we're dealing with this multi-faceted situation with, and we're getting less money to do it. So I think that's important for people to realize. We were able to make those reductions without cutting any staff. There are districts in our county that have announced major reductions of their staff, including laying off 20, 30, 40 people before the start of this school year, right now. We are in a position not to have to do that, thanks to Pat Lenhart's work, our finance committee and everybody else. But we're certainly not in a position to add new positions right now. So that is a huge challenge. And that will be a challenge even as we deal with substitutes for long-term leaves and that sort of thing. So I did want to kind of mention that. How frequently we're going to look at the data and that sort of thing. So that's one of the questions for our health officials. We've asked them. We're hoping that there's going to be the kind of guidance we've seen in some other states that we don't yet have to measure community transmission and use that to inform us. As of right now, there's no guidance like that from the Department of Health. We're hoping to create that. As far as timing, I would imagine that we'd be looking at a month-by-month kind of a basis. And the bill that's, that was introduced in the assembly last week directs the state to make that happen. That every month, we talk about the next month. That seems like a reasonable timeframe to me, that we would commit to something like right now. So if we play that out, we committed to hybrid one for the month of September. We're immediately in September looking at, how's it going? What can we do for October? Do we have to go in either direction? But that's all, that's just personal opinion. We don't actually have that guidance at this point. I apologize that it feels like a bait and switch or a purposeful hiding of information that is, I mean, we've published everything. Tomorrow on the website, you'll see everything that we shared tonight in writing, so people can look at it. The, to reiterate, so under the original model, what we put on the slide was four days. The max, the normal school day length is six and a half hours. Whether, whether we could achieve that for instructional purposes was a question mark that we had to work through in our committees once it was approved. It wasn't approved. We were directed to come up with something with 50%. So we went back to the drawing board to look at that. Couple of things that play out there. So when we start making the schedule that uses all five days, some of the things we would have done with the Wednesday, we can't do anymore. That includes teacher collaboration, communication between the distance students and the teachers who are in distance and the teachers in person. We had to create a new place for that to take place. And at a minimum, that would be about an hour a day, instead of having an entire Wednesday. So when we took an hour off the top, that brings us down to five and a half hours a day. And then we started talking about the logistics, because there are all kinds of contractual considerations. And you can't expect an individual teacher to teach nonstop for five and a half hours. They get, you know, rarely, things like their bathroom breaks and a lunch and their own time for preparation and collaboration. So we went from five and a half hours to, if lunch and recess is an hour of that time, and it's creating all kinds of difficulties, maybe we should just go down to four and a half hours, which is how we got to four and a half. We remove lunch and recess from the five and a half, and that's where four and a half came from. And that allowed us, I think, the final model of the balancing of at home and at school, I actually think is stronger than our original model. I think the creativity that had to happen in our instruction subcommittee over the last few weeks actually led to probably a better outcome. And one that is, as somebody mentioned earlier. And one that is, as somebody mentioned earlier, in common with the vast majority of school districts. Almost, I don't, there may only be one or two districts I know of in Somerset County that are not doing half-days. Generally, those are places where they don't have busing and there's a different consideration. So that's how it got from six and a half to four and a half. I know that, you know, one of the things I, I meant to say at the outset, and which is obviously true, is that there's no plan that's going to meet everybody's needs. We're doing, we're coming up with the best plan for the initial hybrid one. I'm sorry, Mrs. Zahn, I saw you.
I'm so sorry, Dr. Mingle. I didn't mean to cut you off. Mr. Bowman?
Dr. Mingle, are you done?
Sure.
Mrs. Song, please.
I'm so sorry. Um, you know, there's a series of questions here that I want to make sure we don't get lost and forget about. And this is to Mr. Goya and this is Pucci. We have spent years telling the community that we have declining enrollment. We went through a whole process, the steep process, where we evaluated whether or not we were going to close a school. And as a Mount Whore parent myself, and I know other Mount Whore parents, they know that those buildings are not fully occupied. There is absolutely a reason why we are at capacity at the 50%, given the CDC guidelines. And I, I know that that's true, but I don't think we've done a good job explaining that. So while tonight may not be the moment to do that, I do encourage Dr. Mingle, if we can find an opportunity to more clearly explain to our community, why it is that the 50% model is being approved tonight is the maximum capacity that we can offer, given our facilities and our staffing and our finances.
Sure. And I failed to mention, so let me address that a little bit right now and then we can follow up more in the future because, thank you, Mrs. Zahn. There are a lot of considerations besides just the number of square footage. So the calculations that are in those state reports are based on actual occupancy by fire code based on a calculation. One of the very first things that happened when the state guidance came out on June 24th is a calculation of the square footage of every single one of our instructional spaces. And based on the guidance, how many people could be in those spaces? Many of our rooms, because the buildings were built when they, when they were, are only allowed to have something like four to six students in them. You add in a teacher and a para or whatever else, and suddenly you can't even have the 12 students that we're trying to get to in our classrooms. So, and the very large spaces like gymnasiums, either we need to cut the kinds of activities that take place in those spaces, which as you saw in our model, many of them are either reduced or completely cut. We're going to try to be outside for them or they'll be part of the distance learning model. Those spaces may not be conducive, even if you can fit, let's say, 40 students, let's, in a, in a gymnasium. That's not the environment in which we teach first grade. And so we have to decide, is that the right place to put our first graders? There is a district in Morris County that advertised that they're going back to school full-time. But what they, what's buried on page whatever of their plan is that half of the kids will be in an auditorium for the entire school day, every day, sitting by themselves in one seat. I don't think that that's the best model. So even though there is some space, there's also considerations like, do we have enough staff to staff those extra spaces? Do those spaces have the ventilation that you've heard people talk about so that we can actually provide them the safe environment they need? If we split up, you know, if we use every staff member we have, how are we going to handle, to some people's comments, not having substitutes? There's a possibility, and there are recommendations that we not use substitute teachers this year. If that's the case, how do we staff those classrooms when teachers are absent? So there's a lot of considerations. We can definitely look into more of that, but I would just, really, one last thing before I finish. Once we get the hybrid 1.0 in place, we will have a much better sense of what works and what doesn't. And we might be able to say, you know what, this space, we didn't think the libraries were going to be a good option for whatever reason. Now that we're here and we see how it's all flowing, that's another space. And maybe that allows us to bring back kindergarten full-time. Or we have enough spaces, well, maybe we can bring kindergarten in first grade. So those are all things on our agenda. But we want to make sure that we promise and deliver on what we promise and then iterate up from there.
Mr. Breezy, please.
Sure, thank you. Just along those lines, I, I feel like I have to say this, and I'm probably not the only person who has done it. Like, we, we have binders with floor plans and I've personally spent weekends, more time than I care to admit, going through these for exactly those questions. Cause I, I I had the same math problem in my, in my own head, down to calculating square footage of a six-foot radius circle and how to fit it all in. So I, I feel confident that I've, I've done the work. Shame on me. I probably didn't show it. But I, I will sleep easy knowing that I, I did the homework. So I apologize if I didn't share that earlier. Thank you, Mrs. Zahn, for bringing that up because that's, I think, a really important point.
Yes, definitely important. Thank you, Mr. Breezy, Mrs. Song and Mr. Dr. Mingle for answering these questions. Any other questions? Mrs. Chu?
Did we get to the preschool question?
Great, thank you.
Thank you, sorry. Preschool is very different than everything else. There's a whole separate committee just on preschool. So what we're, what we're trying to make work, which is quite complicated, and I say different because, first of all, it's a tuition-based program for many of the kids. Second of all, it is governed by different state organizations. It's not governed, there, there are offices that govern preschool regulations that are different than K through eight or K through 12. We, I spoke with Mr. Russ earlier today. We, our goal would be to send specific preschool-only communications to families that have registered for preschool. Probably tomorrow, if not on Wednesday, to address preschool-specific concerns as we're trying to finalize those of, so that, and if we need to extend the deadline for getting a refund of tuition, we will do that again. That's not a problem. Nobody will be locked in because they didn't have the information to make their decision. So I don't have the answers for you right this second. But we know that preschool has a unique set of concerns that we need to get out to preschool parents.
Great, thank you, Dr. Mingle. Any other? Was then, moving on to agenda item 16. Mrs. Song, could you please?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Velma.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Have a nice evening, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.